Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. We welcome you here to continuation of Leon County's Board of County Commissioners. We are scheduled for our public hearings at 6 o'clock. We have three for the county. Immediately following those public hearings, we will have the joint adoption public hearing with the city commission. So, city commissioners, please bear with us, but our direction tonight is for item number 15. If you would bear with us for a moment, our county administrator, if you would lead us, please, in 15, 16, and 17.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. Item number 15 is your first and only public hearing to consider adopting an ordinance to sunset the Leon County Contractors Licensing Program and the Contractors Licensing Board. Commissioners, as discussed in the item, we recommend the sunsetting as the state has really preempted these local contractor licensing programs. We truly do not view this as a typical preemption issue as much as a long-evolving shift that's been in works for many years to sort of centralize this process. Happy to answer any questions you might have. We're recommending option one. We have no speaker cards on this item.
Any Commissioners wish to speak? Mr. Dozier.
First, my chair is not here, but in his honor, I'll make a motion before I make my comments. For staff recommendation?
Motion second by Commissioner Cummings.
Thank you. And I just wanted to say thank you. In the briefings, we talked about, we had one constituent email with some concerns about this, and it's my understanding staff has helped understand that there will be other options, and I believe the state will be honoring those very, very limited number of licenses that still exist within Leon County. Is that correct? Okay, thank you.
Okay. Ms. Minor, Commissioner.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. When I first started looking at the title of the agenda item, I was concerned because it seemed to me that the Contractors Licensing Board would be sunset, and it would not provide that type of oversight that should exist, and particularly from a body of peers that would basically review complaints. But in our briefing with the county administrator and deputy county administrator, I think you did a very good job clarifying that. I mean, the state preemption really kind of has stripped the responsibility of local governments from doing that, and has taken over much, if not all, of that oversight. So I just wanted to point that out. For anyone that might be either watching at home and being alarmed by this, this is really something that's already been, over many, many years, a gradual shift towards state oversight. So I just want to point that out. Mr. County Administrator, you want anything to add with that?
Commissioner Minor, I think you've covered it. We're happy to answer any questions if you have any.
Thank you very much, sir. No, I have no questions.
Okay, is Commissioner Welch still in line? Commissioner Welch, you desire to weigh in?
Yes, sir, I'm here. I have no comments.
Okay. Commissioners, we've gone around the waterfront, hearing no other comments, all in favor of the motion of option one. Please say aye. It passes unanimously. Next item, Mr. Administrator.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Commissioners, next item, item number 17, is the second and final public hearing to consider adopting an ordinance amending Chapter 10 of Land Development Code to address sign regulations. Again, this is your second public hearing on this. It reflects your previous policy direction to deal with issues that have been ruled unconstitutional by the United States Supreme Court, as well as to modify and enhance current regulations. Again, this follows your previous policy direction. We're recommending option one, and I have no speakers on this item.
Motion has been made by Commissioner Dozier, second by Commissioner Minor. Hearing no comments, all in favor, please say aye. It passes unanimously. The next item, Mr. Administrator.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is your, the item before you, item number 17, request board, request the board to conduct the first and only public hearing to consider adopting a proposed ordinance amending the official zoning map to change the zoning classification from manufactured home and single-family detached R5 to office residential or OR2 zoning district for property located at 6,034 West Tennessee Street, based on findings of fact and conclusions of law of the planning commission and any evidence submitted at the hearing hereon. And with that, Mr. Chairman, we do have one speaker card on this item, and we're recommending option one.
Okay, is Speaker, who's that person?
It's Michael Poplin, and I see the note here, "Will answer questions if needed."
Ms. Poplar, if you're here, please come forward.
[inaudible]
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
Michael Poplin, here, if you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer them.
Okay. Commissioners, are there any inquiries of Mr. Poplar? Hearing none, all right. Very good. We have a motion by Commissioner Dozier, second by Commissioner Cummings. Hearing no other discussion, all in favor of the motion, please say aye. It passes unanimously. We thank you very much. We move now, Commissioners, to our meeting now with city commissioners, as we change hats and become our comprehensive planning board, I guess you'd say, comp plan hearing.
Virtual.
Hold on. Is the mayor on the line? Is he participating?
I am here, Mr. Chairman.
Very good, okay, very good. We have Commissioner for the record, as we begin. Mayor Daley is participating by way of phone. We don't need a vote on that, or do we? We do, okay. Commissioner Richardson, I turn that over to you.
Is there a motion to allow the mayor to participate? [inaudible] Commissioner Maddox, all in favor, so please say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Do we need another vote to authorize Commissioner Welch? Okay, very good. Commissioner Welch, you're in good shape. Moving right along. Thank you so very much, as we invite staff's presentation.
Thank you, Commissioners. It's my pleasure to bring the 2022 Cycle Comprehensive Plan Amendments to its final meeting, the adoption public hearing. As you are aware, this is a process that we do every year. It's a very deliberate process. It begins with accepting of applications. We then move into public open house, a workshop and public hearing with the local planning agency, and then we do a joint workshop with this joint commission together, followed by the transmittal public hearing, and the final step is the adoption public hearing, which is tonight. There are seven amendments in this cycle. Four of them are joint amendments, two are county-only amendments, and one is a city-only amendment. I will note that the MAP amendments also have concurrent rezonings. Those rezonings do require the disclosure of ex parte communications. So at this point, I'll hand it over to the county and city attorneys if there's anything you want to say about the ex parte.
Thank you. On behalf of the county commissioners, I would just like to put into the record and note that attachment number 31 was released earlier today. It includes the vast majority of the ex parte communications that the board members received regarding options eight, 11, and 13 that the board will consider during this public hearing. There have been some additional communications received. Commissioner Dozier had a communication with three representatives from D.R. Horton, Stuart Hare, Gary Hunter, and Robert Volpe. I apologize if I butcher anyone's names.
And I don't believe Mr. Volpe was included on that meeting. It was just, yeah.
So just Mr. Hare and Mr. Hunter?
Yes.
They were representatives of D.R. Horton, which is the applicant, for options eight, 11, and 13, and there was general discussion about support for those options and the developer's intent with regard to some of the development that might occur on those properties pending approval by the board. Commissioner Dozier commented on traffic concerns. She has and encouraged the applicant to work with the city of Tallahassee on traffic assessment specific to Southwood Plantation Road. That communication related to options 11 and 13, is my understanding. Commissioner Dozier also today received a communication from Roseanne Wood expressing concerns about option number 13. Southwood Plantation and April Roads would be options 11 and 13, based on just infrastructure needs for the changes. We have a communication from, perceived today, from an Ann Mezzenzol, opposed to option number three, the rezoning on Southwood Plantation Road. She's a member of the grassroots community off of Old St. Augustine Road and was worried about infrastructure and who would pay for development, and also traffic on Old St. Augustine Road. That communication did go to all of the county commissioners. A very similar communication was received from today by all commissioners from Linda Scaquelosi. I'm going to butcher that, sorry, everybody, and especially Ms. Linda, as I'll refer to her. She is opposed to option number 13. She's also a member of the grassroots community off of Old St. Augustine Road, based on roadway capacity, population growth, available developmental, developable land in the USA, and the cost to the public to provide infrastructure and services. Another communication today from Linda Service to all commissioners, opposed to the rezoning for Southwood Plantation Road and April Road, which are options 11 and 13, worried about traffic on the road on Old St. Augustine Road, and population growth, availability, developable land in the USA, roadway capacity, cost to the public to provide infrastructure and services. There was an additional communication from Michael Jinks. Went to all the commissioners today, not needed or in the best interest of the Tallahassee community, as opposed to option 13, no shortage of housing, only benefits a local non-developer. That was the gist of that communication as well. And there were two communications for Commissioner Cummings to disclose. This communication was received by all the other commissioners as well, is noted on page 61 of attachment 31. The communication was received from Carrie Gaudio on June 10th, opposed to the request rezoning of Southwood Plantation Road, which is option 13, as a member of the grassroots community off of Old St. Augustine Road. Existing infrastructure insufficient, basically a safety issue and concern. And the final one was from two Commissioner Cummings, along with all the other commissioners. It's disclosed on page 56 of attachment 31, Roger Peace, dated June 9th, opposed to option number 13. Does not support traffic. It's a rural area, roads are too narrow, and that is basically the gist of that communication as well. And again, that's already been disclosed by the other commissioners, and starts on page 56 of attachment 31. Are there any other ex parte communications that any of the county commissioners need to disclose? Make part of the record.
Madam Attorney, did you mention, I got an email today at 1:54 PM from Michael Jerks, I believe?
Jinks?
You did, you did.
I did disclose.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Yeah, go ahead. And, Madam Attorney, I just wanted to start with Commissioner Maddox, verifying did Mr. Williams cop here. And the other one, I think you mentioned this, June 14th, for all commissioners, for Linda Service.
Correct.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, ma'am.
I just wanted to clarify for the county attorney. I thought I had an email that you were not going to cover in that list. You have covered all of them. However, I did receive a voicemail from Linda Service as well this afternoon, so I'm not sure if you received that one from my aide. It was 2:30 PM, and this follows some emails last night of just asking if there would be virtual participation in the meeting. So it was nothing in addition to what you read out with her email to all commissioners. Thank you.
Ms. Minor.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Madam County Attorney, there is a text I did receive earlier at 12:38 PM today from Ms. Roseanne Wood, stating that she's very concerned about the zoning changes being requested for Southwood Plantation and April Roads. I'm sure you've seen the letters from our community. I hope you will vote no and speak out about the lack of infrastructure needed for these changes. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Ms. Mayor Protim, are there any, I'm sorry, Madam Attorney?
Just to close it out, given the ex parte communications that have been received by the commission members, do you all agree that you can be objective and will base any decision you make this evening with regard to options eight, 11, or 13 on the competent substantial evidence in the record?
Yes.
Yes? Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Mayor Protim, are there any confessions that the city commissioners like to make with respect to ex parte communication? Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mayor Protim. So the city has only one quasi-judicial matter, that is, the proposed ordinance 2022-Z-12, amending the official zoning map to change the zoning classification from Plan Unit Development PUD to High Intensity Activity Center AC Zoning District concurrent with the small-scale MAP Amendment TMA 2022-001, the NACIO Trust. As you know, you have disclosed all of your communications pursuant to city ordinance, city resolution number 95-R-54 in the board doc system. If you have any other communications that you would like to disclose, you can do so at this time.
Commissioners, does anyone have any at this time? Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Attorney. Mr. Chairman. Okay, thank you. Thank you, staff. If you would lead us now in the planned amendment cycles and those which we're, and we're splitting, I like the delineation, we're doing those first four together, five and six is the county, and seven is the city, accurate.
That's correct, Chairman, thank you. So at this point, we'll go into the joint amendments. I'm going to ask Mindy Mormon, the administrator of comprehensive planning, to go over the first two, and then I'll pick up the rest. While I do that, if there's anyone who has a speaker card, please provide it to me, and I'll make sure that you get called at the right time.
Can these be adopted as a package? Can they be adopted as a package, 1, 2, 3, 4?
No, because the rezoning options are predicated upon approval of option 5 and the large-scale amendments related to the rezonings. So, no, they need to be taken in order.
Okay.
Good evening, Commissioners. I'll start with the property rights element. This is an amendment that creates a new property rights element to the Leon, Tallahassee-Leon County Comprehensive Plan. It reaffirms existing property rights granted by the federal law and state, so it doesn't add anything new. Some key facts is that this is a new state requirement from the 2021 legislative session. It is required that this amendment is adopted prior to any other additional amendments. And for additional information, you can find it in attachment 16 in the staff report. Sorry about that. I do need to read the city ordinance into the record. This is ordinance number 22-O-07, an ordinance of the city of Tallahassee adopting a text amendment to the 2030 Tallahassee-Leon County Comprehensive Plan, creating the property rights element, providing for severability and conflicts, and providing an effective date. And at this point, the recommended actions, the LPA did recommend adoption, so the recommended actions are option one for the county and option two for the city. And as far as I know, we have no speakers for this amendment.
Okay. Commissioners, is there a motion for option one?
Seven.
We have a motion, second. Any discussion? Hearing none? All in favor of option one, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, it carries unanimously. Six, zero. Mayor Protim, of course.
Commissioners, is there a motion for the option two? Moved by Mr. Williams.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Maddox. All in favor, so please say aye.
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 Here unanimously, five, six, zero.
Sure.
Okay, moving on to our second amendment.
Mr. Mayor Protim, if you could turn your microphone on, it'd be easier to hear you.
Commissioners, if you could, to be heard, there's a little thingy, the gray piece there, and when the green light is right here, you would know if you're on or... I'm so unaccustomed to that across the street, I, yeah. Well, I understand you've not stepped up to this level.
We didn't know we had to crank it up. Thank you, everybody.
I've played dozens in our house.
See what you started, man.
But I tell you what, our roof is not leaking, and today, if it was, you would know it. Continues there.
Okay.
We're trying to keep the city, you know, behaving correctly. That's what happens when the mayor is not here.
All right, our second amendment is an update to the future right-of-way needs map. This updates the future right-of-way needs map in the mobility element to include needed right-of-way for planned projects and removes projects that already have or don't need additional right-of-way. Some key facts is that this is required to be reviewed and updated, if necessary, every five years concurrent with the long-range transportation plan update. And for additional information, you can see the staff report in attachment 17. I'll read the city ordinance into the record. This is ordinance number 22-O-08, an ordinance of the city of Tallahassee adopting a text amendment to the 2030 Tallahassee-Leon County Comprehensive Plan, amending the mobility element, providing for severability and conflicts, and providing an effective date. The LPA did recommend adoption on this amendment, so the recommended action for the county is option three, and for the city is option four, and I do not believe we have any speakers for this amendment.
Are there any questions, Commissioners, about this? I want to ask, how does this future right-of-way work in tandem with blueprint projects? And is this the John crying in the wilderness, a voice preceding Jesus? That this ordinance is one that precedes and goes in front of our blueprint program? Are all these separate thoughts, independent?
The MAP shows projects that are in the long-range transportation plan and blueprint projects that are already planned for implementation.
All right, so Woodville Highway, for instance, is comfortably placed inside the thoughts of this question, the Woodville Highway.
It's difficult for me to speak to individual projects.
Does anyone in staff know that adopting this makes it more difficult for us to acquire Woodville Highway expansion, or does it make it simpler?
It would make it simpler, Commissioner.
Very good. We're wanting to simplify future acquisitions of right-of-way for those projects which we have, and specifically for the south side, Capital Circle expansion, southwest Capital Circle, Woodville Highway, and all of those. And I don't want to vote for something that gonna make it wussa than what it already is. Okay, all right. Commissioners, hearing no other comments, county commissioners, is there a motion? Motion by Commissioner Dozier, seconded by Commissioner Maddox. Hearing no other discussion, all in favor of option three, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, it passes unanimously. Mr. Mayor Protim.
Is there a motion on option four?
Seven, miss.
Moved by Commissioner Maddox, seconded by Commissioner Williams. Are there any questions?
Hearing none. I'm gonna get it right in a minute, y'all. But you're gonna get used to our house, and you're not gonna leave. We're gonna crank it up, right? All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
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 The motion carries five, zero. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Very good. Thank you, Mindy, if you continue.
All right, at this point, I'll turn it over to the planning director, Artie White.
Thank you, Commissioners. The next amendment is a text amendment to the future land use map that includes the urban services area. So this amendment would expand the urban service area in three different locations. Those are shown on the map. These are related to the MAP amendments and the concurrent rezonings that will follow this amendment in this public hearing. Those would be the April Road, Woodville Highway, and Southwood Plantation Road MAP amendments. And so, once this amendment's over, we'll move into those MAP amendments and the concurrent rezonings for those. Kind of zooming in a little bit, these are kind of the three different sites. One thing to note, which I'll note on the next slide, is that for each of these locations, the urban services area actually already covers a portion of the site. On Woodville Highway, it's actually the majority of the site, but for the other ones, it covers a smaller portion of each of the sites, and it is adjacent to the urban services area in at least two sides of each of these subject sites, in some cases, three. So you can kind of see, zoomed in here, a couple of key facts, and these are all found in the staff report. But the urban services area is one of several strategies in the comprehensive plan for managing growth. It has been amended 12 times since the comprehensive plan was adopted in 1990. During that time, Leon County's population has grown 51.8%. The urban services area has seen an increase in 2.4% of its overall area. As I noted, a portion of each site is within the urban services area, and it's adjacent to the existing urban services area. Those are important because the comp plan denotes times when you could expand the urban service area, so we couldn't expand it out without it being adjacent to where the urban service area is now. At the transmittal hearing, we went into a lot of detail on the vacant potentially developable parcels. Again, that was part of relating back to the policies of the comprehensive plan related to the urban services area. Information on all of these analyses are attachment 18. I will read the city's ordinance into the record. This is ordinance number 22-O-09, or 09, an ordinance of the city of Tallahassee adopting a text amendment to the 2030 Tallahassee-Leon County Comprehensive Plan, amending the urban services area in the land use element, providing for severability and conflicts, and providing an effective date. Local planning agency did recommend approval. For the county, that would be option five, and for the city, it's option six.
Commissioners, are there any, are there any questions? Commissioners, are there any questions?
Speakers.
If I may ask a question, Commissioner Williams-Cox, you were gonna probably ask the same. We have speakers who are interested in all three of these different proposals. Are we going to be able to take all of those speakers with the map amendments, since this is kind of a domino effect here?
Several of the speakers have requested the ability to do that.
Okay. I'm sorry, Commissioner Williams-Cox, that was, we were on the same page, right?
Yeah.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
You have speakers?
We do. So, the first speaker will be Robert Dial, followed by Sean Marston, and then Gary Hunter.
Point of information, the city is reading these into an ordinance proposal. Is there a need for the county to do a similar thing, or we just do it by fiat?
That requirement is required under the city's code. We do not have the same requirement in our code.
Okay, very good.
The first speaker is Robert Dial.
Good evening. My name is Robert Dial. I reside at 2409 Oakdale Street, Tallahassee. I'm here on behalf of the Wakulla Springs Alliance Board, for which I serve as Vice Chair. Mayor Daley and members of the City Commission should have received a letter yesterday via email from our Chair, Rob Williams, urging you to vote no on the proposed amendments to the urban services area for the Woodville Highway East parcel and the Southwood Plantation Road parcel. I realize now that that letter also should have been addressed to members of the County Commission, and I apologize for that oversight. Staff's justification for these urban services area expansions, I'm sorry, we're also urging you to vote no on the accompanying future land use and zoning classifications, again, for those two parcels, the East Woodville Highway parcel and the Southwood Plantation Road parcel. Staff's justification for the urban services area expansions and accompanying land use and zoning map amendments is not consistent with a proper reading of the governing land use objectives and policies. The intent of those objectives and policies is for the USA to guide the location of development, not for development to guide the location of the urban services area boundary. The Woodville Highway East parcel has no sewer access, while the Southwood Plantation Road parcel has no sewer or water access. Allowing increased development densities in these areas is not consistent with land use objective 1.1, which calls for restricting development in the USA to ensure responsible growth with infrastructure provided economically and efficiently. Allowing higher-density developments in those areas not served by sewer will also negatively affect Wakulla Springs by increasing nitrogen pollution of groundwater via septic systems that provide minimal nitrogen removal compared to the removal we get at the sewage treatment plant, which would be where wastewater would go if those properties were sewered. The staff analysis fails to demonstrate any need to expand the urban services area to accommodate future growth within the 20-year planning horizon of the comp plan. Was that my time?
No, sir.
Okay. Consistent with, again, land use objective 1.1, which states that the location and size of the urban services area shall be based on the area necessary to accommodate 90% of the new residential dwelling units by the plan horizon, which is a 20-year time period. Prior to the Wollani USA expansion, Dr. Pam Hall demonstrated that there was still more than sufficient land available at that time within the applicable planning horizon. And with the Wollani USA expansion, we estimate there's enough developable land already inside the USA for approximately 45 years, more than twice the planning horizon. It is for these reasons that the Alliance Board urges you to vote against adopting the proposed urban service area expansions and the accompanying future land use and zoning classifications for the East Woodville Road parcel, which is the one outside the USA, and the Southwood Plantation Road parcel. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Sean Marston. I'm President of Urban Catalyst Consultants. I am working with D.R. Horton on these projects. I would like to, what I already pointed out, urban services area touches each of these parcels. If that urban services gets expanded, it would be the responsibility of the developer to provide the central water and sewer systems for those projects. So, I hope that you approve the motion.
Please state your name and address for our records.
Gary Hunter, here on behalf of the applicant. I'm with Holzman Vogel Law Firm here in town. I would, I'm happy to answer any questions you all have. I'd echo what Mr. Marston said, most importantly. It's suggested that urban services are not available to any of these three properties. These three properties, frankly, are surrounded by the urban services area. And the proposed expansion, if you look at the maps, which Artie showed earlier, each of these parcels, one of the parcels already is halfway in the urban service area, the portion in the city, actually more than half the properties in the urban service area. You look at the two off Old St. Augustine, between Old St. Augustine Road and Athletch Parkway, both of those parcels to the east have denser developments and are being proposed on these sites. The urban services area surrounds these sites. If there's ever a location where the urban services area were to be expanded, this is the location. And I'm not going to recite the analysis done by your staff, because they did a better job than I could do. But the fact is, the urban services area is, needs to be expanded. Your staff has concluded that. There is an expansion that, obviously, I was, many of you were on your respective boards when I represented Wollani Plantation and their expansion of the urban service area within the city. But if you look at that expansion, it is phased over time. So, it's over a long period of time. And even with that expansion, the city and county are far short from meeting the urban needs. And most importantly, I'll say this on these sites, while the county does not have an inclusionary zoning or inclusionary housing ordinance, this is a developer that's attempting to provide housing that people can afford in this community, for the first time, frankly, in a long time. And it's in an area that they're able to afford the property and, in turn, be able to develop homes that hopefully people can afford, as opposed to in the northeast portion of our community. And we all know, nothing against any of us who reside in the northeast portion of our community, but it's expensive to live there. It's expensive to buy property there. It's expensive to build homes there. And whoever's developing in that area is going to maximize their return on that investment. And this, all three of these parcels provide an opportunity for us to address a really serious concern. And I say this as sincere as I can, and you all know this, a very serious concern in our community about the ability for those who can't buy in the northeast portion of the community to be able to afford, to acquire a new home. And it's important that they be able to do that. And finally, finally, we've got a developer who's come into the community and is prepared to do that. And, I mean, listen, your staff did an excellent analysis on the urban service area expansion. I just urge your favorable support so we can go forward with the land use and the rezonings and move these projects forward.
Thank you, Ms. Vogel. I want to ask you, what's your expectation when you use the word urban services? What do you anticipate is going to occur with this property by it being designated as an urban serviced area?
Well, most importantly, Commissioner, good question, the properties can be developed beyond the rural restrictions that are imposed upon them.
You mean like one house on 10 acres or something like that?
Correct, yes, sir.
Anything else, when you use the word urban services, that you have an expectation?
Well, also, obviously, because it's within the urban service area, you'll get water, you'll get sewer. So, the issues that allow a denser development will occur on those properties, so you won't have septic systems that are, I mean, admittedly, they're currently, the parcels are zoned 1 in 10, but you could go develop them 1 in 10 with septic systems, and that is not good for the community. I mean, three houses per acre are far better than one per 10 from an environmental perspective when those three houses are connected to the sewer system.
Well, the city and county commissions have been hostile to changing rural zoning over the years. In fact, you can't find a wholesale review of the rural designation. It's good somebody's fighting to change that. But oftentimes, to dangle the word affordable housing in front of this body, it often leads to a bait and switch. And we've heard time and again, affordable housing, inclusionary housing, affordable housing. And, but the lines in this community move. When you move the urban services area, you move them for housing which is unattainable to the average income person. We don't move the lines for affordable housing. That hadn't happened. I hadn't seen it. And I'm not sure under what guise the company you're representing. But, and when it comes to the South Side, I ask your expectation of what urban services mean. And I don't know what the city interprets it to be. When it comes to the urban services area, information, share it with us, is that it's been amended since 1990, 12 times. And when it pertains to the same area, we had an urban services line years ago. But when it came to the adjustment for urban services on the South Side, that line was evaporated and withdrawn. See, we get a reduction. Now, to my point. My point is that there are homes dense already that do not have the urban services package you're speaking of inside of Capital Circle, right on the other side of Capital Circle. We had a constituent today talking about Lake Munson and the people who live just south of Publix on Crawfordville Road. And there are toxins and there's fecal matter in a public body of water. That's the urban services that we get served up. So, if your community is going to get sewer, I would sure like to see existing communities that have been paying the city over the years to get it too. But I recognize that Southwood and everything outside of the interior Capital Circle are quote "more elite" communities. The promise of urban services have been delivered. And here is another swath of property that would be served with urban services with an expectation to get what's printed in the book. But it's not your problem, sir. It's one that the city is under-delivered to, the citizens who are already there and can't get it. And it absolutely frustrates me to know that there is a chance that this community will get urban services for real, and people who are paying ain't got it yet. But that's not your fault. It can be changed if the will of parties at this table and on the phone would change it, but it hadn't occurred. So, to the other sense of hesitation that I have, is the bait and switch thing. Every time we move urban services, it ain't for affordable. It'll be houses that are unattainable to the basic person. But it's because you're coming toward and coming in the south part of our community. I disagree with the first speaker, that Wollani represents enough urban service capacity. People will not be able to afford that area. And if affordability is to be a moving variable of which we weigh, it likely will occur in the South Side that affordability can occur, more so than that property of which previous speaker suggested was enough, was there, blah, blah, blah. We can't get up there. So, thinking about Crawfordville, looking at the growth of Crawfordville, looking at the new Publix down there, all of that could have been, should have been, South Tallahassee had we zoned, had we cared about, as much about that economic index clientele versus an upper, so-called upper-reach homes. And we have not paid attention to that. So, I'd like to talk to you further and people you represent, because I'm sincerely interested in a quality of housing that's within the reach of the citizens of the South Side. And I urge you, Commissioners, to, even hearing what I've said tonight, I urge that we move that line. That line existed and was taken away, and that people got to come back and refight the fight that had already been existing, except it was taken away. It's frustrating. So, I'm going to support this measure, and I yield now to county commissioners who desire to speak on Option 5. Commissioner Dozier.
Mr. Chair, I just wanted to clarify one thing with staff and then...
Yes, ma'am.
So, do we have, sorry, Artie, I'm looking up there as I normally do. I'm gonna look to you. We have speakers on other items related to Woodville April and Southwood Plantation Road?
We do, and there are actually more on this item. I just called three at a time.
I thought, okay, that's what I wanted to check, because should these USA expansions pass, I mean, they're, again, it leads to the others, so I thought that we would have more speakers. Thank you.
Okay. Are these, I thought they were all separate, those three expansions, or is this a package of expansions?
This is a package.
Okay.
So, the next speaker would be Nita Davis-Jane, followed by, we have two on Zoom. One is Jeff Blair, and the other one is Stephen Martin. And then we have some for the map amendments, but I'll confirm if they want to speak on this.
Okay. Speakers, your names have been called. If you would come successively in that order, we'd appreciate it. Thank you. If you would state your name and address for our records.
My name's Nita Davis. And you want my address?
Please. Yes, ma'am.
Okay. County, 1111 East Paul Russell Road, Tallahassee, Florida, 32301. And I'm here to speak, and I want to say firstly, I don't know if anyone's been out Woodville Highway lately and seen the new houses. They start at $350,000, so that's real affordable.
Could you repeat that?
Oh, the new project that went up on Woodville Highway, has Ace Hardware. They start at their $350,000. So, we're talking about Woodville Highway. You know, I guess it's going to be the new road to prosperity. But anyway, just thought I would let you know. And I'm also here to speak, to put a stop to please vote no on this. I proceed to you on behalf of our car system, our water system, our aqua four. What we are doing isn't working. We have a 30-foot setback from the springs, from sinkholes. How can we build 30 feet from a sinkhole and then say, this is what I was told when I went to the meeting with this, was that they will teach, they will teach the people how to take care of their lawn so it won't run into the sinkholes. This was on the English PUD, by the way. But anyway, that's what I was told. So, basically, what I'm saying, what we're doing isn't working. We all know this. We know it's not working. We know the old Munson Slough that cuts through down to Lake Henrietta, which they're going to clean up and waste all that money, because that's like washing a dog and, or washing a pond and throwing the dirty dog back in. Because that Munson Slough is going to go right back into Lake Henrietta. So, until this city and county gets a grip and re, goes back to the drawing board, basically, this is what needs to be done. We need to go back to the drawing board on this, because what we're doing is we're killing the aqua four in this city, and we're responsible for it. We are killing Wakulla Springs, the largest freshwater spring in the world, and we're responsible for it. Our pandering, the way we develop, and our antiquated, outdated sewer system. Plus, you've got to remember, phase one of the Lake Munson study has come back and has come back with the report that the highest mortality rate in the county... and has come back with the report that the highest mortality rate in the county is people living around Lake Munson. And that's factoring in socioeconomics. So if you're trying to tell me what we're doing with our water management and our sewer management is correct, I say foul on that because it's not. And as far as, you know, the bait and switch, I'm right there because that's all it's been this whole time, bait and switch. And when you're putting $350,000 homes on Woodville Highway, if that's not a bait and switch, and those families that have lived down there for decades and generations, they're going to get pushed out. Their land's worth too much. And they're going to be replaced. That's just the way it is. I'm sorry, but I'm just telling the truth. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Davis, for the points you've shared. Our next speaker.
The next speaker is Jeff Blair via Zoom, followed by Stephen Martin on Zoom.
Are you able to hear me?
Yes, we can.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. I'm Jeff Blair, 1803 04 Drive. I'm speaking on all four amendments submitted by D.R. Horton. The Woodland Drive Neighborhood Association and Keeper Rural are urging denial of all four of the D.R. Horton Conplan amendments based on the following. These amendments prematurely open large acreage for high-density residential and commercial uses that fail to meet the consistency requirements of the Conplan. A primary vision of the plan is to discourage sprawl, which encourages degradation of the county's natural resources by prematurely committing vast areas to the impacts of urbanization, promotes strip commercial development, negatively affects traffic, safety, and flow, and increases reliance on cars. These amendments are inconsistent with the plan's land use policies for prohibiting residential sprawl into areas lacking basic urban infrastructure services and for preserving rural land for agriculture, silviculture, and low-density residential development. These amendments fail to meet the concurrency regulations of the plan that local governments are required by state law to adopt to ensure that new development does not outstrip local government's ability to handle it. The regulations require that local government has the capacity in water and sewer, stormwater, solid waste, parks, and mass transit to serve each proposed development. There is a large deficit of urban infrastructure inside the existing USA of water, sewer, and transportation services, clearly demonstrating that the current USA already exceeds our local government's fiscal capacity to provide infrastructure. Expanding the urban service area is not justified. Land use plan criterion provides that expansion of the USA should be justified by a showing that there is inadequate developable land to accommodate 90% of the projected population for a 20-year period. The University of Florida's Bureau of Economic and Business Research's population projections demonstrate there is enough developable land already inside the USA for the next 45 years. Approval of these amendments will once again be an example of our elected officials giving developers whatever they want under the guise of economic development jobs without requiring them to pay the true cost of development and growth. This requires us, the taxpayers, to subsidize the costs and profit for, in this case, the largest home builder in the nation. In summary, these amendments should be denied as bad growth management policy, contravening key goals, objectives, and policies of our comprehensive plan, and contrary to the requirements of Florida law for determining concurrency and consistency. These amendments contribute directly to suburban sprawl, traffic congestion, reliance on cars, and inequitable spending of public resources badly needed for the urban core, the South Side and downtown. The amendments are not justified when evaluated against all of the key metrics required by law, including economically, demographically, based on rapid growth, or on any projected current or future housing shortage needs. We urge your denial of all four of D.R. Horton's Conplan amendments. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next speaker.
So our other Zoom speaker has dropped off. We have a few more in person and then we can check and see if Stephen Martin rejoins us. So the next speaker is Jean Murray Wise, followed by Linda Service.
Okay. Mr. Wise, if you please state your name and address for our records.
Jean-Marc Wise, 2340 Moon Dance Trail, Tallahassee, Florida, 32311. The concern is about traffic, number one. So if we have these two developments surrounding basically our little community, the grassroots community off of Old St. Augustine Road, if traffic is routed through St. Augustine Road, then we have a problem with the number of cars that can be anticipated. This is Canopy Road. This should be a protected road. And it's not easy to make the road wider. It was recently redone and they didn't even put a path in for people who have to walk on that road. It's a very dangerous road. So the only thing that could be done there would probably just take down all the trees and make, turn it into, you know, a sister of Appalachia Parkway, which you may not want to do. What, what you might be able to do is to, you know, close it off in a way that traffic only routes out to Appalachia Parkway. That would take care of the traffic. But it wouldn't take care of the way that the, that the quality of living that currently is enjoyed by people who live out there. And these are not just people with tons of money. These are people, you know, have been living there for 50, 60, 70 years, small places. We love the city because there are all these trees and we, we have all this land. We have some space for animals still. We've got lots of different animals, you know, that, that live out there. And the more we just encroach in that, the less this becomes a desirable place. So as far as I'm concerned, I think there are plenty of other opportunities, even within the current city zoning, to find places where that kind of development could happen. Of course, not for the price that they're currently thinking they can pay for that. But that's their problem. That's not the city's problem. So to build these additional housing units or places where people can, can build their homes in a, in a smaller area does not help the city overall. It does not help the attractiveness of the city, this quality of life that we're enjoying, the fact that when you're flying over the city, all you can see is trees, you know. So that would be a problem. The other thing is that we do need to take care of our water. And we have to be very careful with these kinds of developments, that water is not accidentally contaminated, or mistakes are not made in a way that suddenly everybody else is suffering, even though perhaps, you know, the new development is all nice and clean, but then things happen and, you know, suddenly our groundwater is somehow impacted. So we have to be concerned about that as well. And all I really do hope that you look at this very critically, not just from a point of view of, you know, can we expand? Can we let these people, you know, move forward the project? Thank you very much.
Our next speaker, please.
The next speaker is Linda Service, followed by David Handy. And I believe Stephen Martin has rejoined. So after David Handy, it'll be Stephen Martin.
Good evening. I'm Linda Service. I live on Grassroots Way. I also am very concerned about our Canopy Road. If you try and get out on St. Augustine Road from Grassroots Way at 7:30 in the morning, it is already almost impossible during the school period. It's very crowded. It is not meant to have more cars than are already there. And each year we see more and more traffic on it. We love our Canopy Roads, of course. When we moved into Grassroots Community 38 years ago, of course, it was zoned rural. And that's what we love. We love our rural lifestyle. As, we don't think the infrastructure is there for these huge developments. We feel like these developments belong in areas that are already very much designed to be urban service areas. Right now, on Southwood Plantation Road, there is Appalachia Point Apartment Complex. On Orange Avenue, there are tons of apartments. I always see signs when I go down Southwood Plantation Road, but they can see, they can see. But they can't, people can't even afford to rent there. I couldn't afford to rent there. I'm a retired teacher. I have a little pension, but it's still unaffordable. And most of these places are. I'm also concerned, when I looked up on Better Business Bureau, that D.R. Horton does not have a very good reputation for building quality homes. Just another concern. So I urge the commission to rethink rezoning our area to be an urban service area. And that's it. Thank you.
We thank you, Soverly Cali. Our next speaker.
Our next speaker is David Handy, followed by Stephen Martin. And unless I receive any additional speaker cards, that's the last on this, on this item.
Thank you, commissioners, for allowing us to be heard. My name is David Handy. I live at 2396 Grassroots Way. And I think most of the major points have already been made, but I would reinforce several of them. One, the road systems of Old St. Augustine and Southwood Plantation Road are not prepared for the increase in traffic. That, as Linda just mentioned, the traffic has already grown with the advent of Conley Elementary School. Trying to get out onto that road in the mornings is nearly impossible. I used to run on that road and it's simply not possible anymore. I'm concerned that there's a myth about building affordable housing, that if you're going to build affordable housing for the community, for the city of Tallahassee, shouldn't it be located within convenience of downtown? Shouldn't it be located to where there's existing public transportation, where there's existing schools that could, could take this on? I, I think it's a myth. And I think it's misrepresentation. And in terms of the fragile ecosystem out there, when I used to run, I did see the animals out there. And I do know about the, the great wild boars and wild turkey and foxes and deer and otter. So from a personal side, I prefer the Tallahassee that embraces that part of our community. And if we're going to, to talk about development, I don't see a reason to expand the urban services area that far east. I think there are better places to do it. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you. Are there others?
It's Stephen Martin via Zoom.
That's back on the virtual.
Yes, can you hear me?
Sure, Mr. Martin. State your name and address, please.
Hey, Stephen Martin, 2625 Stonegate Drive. And I'm, I'm going to be talking in general about the Conplan and the amendment process, just in general. But one of the people who spoke tonight, ironically, in March of 2018, in front of the Planning Commission, he told the commissioners to follow their conscience and follow the Conplan, the Constitution of land use in Leon County. This is the same person who's been involved with Canopy and, as he said tonight, Walani. And what the prior person just spoke about, what he's seen where he used to be able to see anywhere near where he lives, yeah, what he used to see there, I used to see where Canopy is now. But, but I, I find it very hard to take the comments about the Conplan and the Constitution seriously. The Constitution was adopted 233 years ago, and it's had 27 amendments since then. The Conplan is only 32 years ago that it was adopted. Two centuries later, I'm told it's had about 1,000-plus amendments to it. And so I have a hard time comparing those two. I'm told that the Canopy development abided by the Conplan. Well, nearly 15 years ago, I started speaking out against that development. And I was told so often that I was the only person so opposed to it. Well, it abided by the Conplan. Well, today, I'm not the only person who's opposed to Canopy development. And the fact that it abided by the Conplan is evidence of why I have very little faith in the Conplan, which I think is primarily used as a tool by developers to give persons concerned about development a false sense of security. To those people, and I've been working with people recently on some proposed developments, and they're all have faith in the Conplan, I'm telling them, remember, Canopy abided by the Conplan. And if you have concerns about Canopy, you should have concerns about the Conplan. So just like with Canopy 15 years ago, when I was kind of out on a limb by myself, or I was told as the only person speaking in opposition, yeah, I may be out on a limb by myself in opposition to the current Conplan process, but I wonder if a few years, that'll still be the case. And then I did want to talk about, specifically with some comments that you made at your, or were made at the meeting in April, and I didn't know any better time to do it than tonight. So I've got this item and the next one. But in April, we heard about that this is no life and death, this is a life and death matter at times for people in policymaking with developments in housing. And I spoke with the person who stood up in front of you and told you that their life had been threatened about that incident. And he said pretty much that that was about someone who was living in a home that was being threatened by an proposed development that was very different than the environment that their home was. Well, I don't think it should surprise anybody that people who go out of their way to find a place to go home and then all of a sudden have some massive development or some incompatible development going to come up in their backyard. I can understand their outrage, although I can't really condone making a life threat. But that's what you should be anticipating with this policymaking. You've heard people tonight get up and speak seriously. You're asking for trouble. And speaking about life and death, all this push for development out in the Northeast, well, earlier this year, we had an incident on Banner Monroe, all these new developments, rush hour. I think we all know what happens. That's something that we should have anticipated and shouldn't be that surprised about.
Mr. Martin, your time has expired. Your thoughts have been compelling. We thank you so much for sharing. Last speaker.
I did receive one more speaker card. It's for Stephen Service.
Okay. Please state your name and address, please, for our record.
Stephen Service, 5052 Sweet Basil Jane Street, Tallahassee, Florida, 32311. I wasn't going to speak, but then I just heard a few things and thought I should address it or ask questions, as you should also. They said they're building affordable housing, and I really want to know what that means. I've certified homes for Energy Star and Green Building Certification through Habitat, and these were affordable houses that we built for the community. We did an 80-year-old Rainbow Rehab certification on a low-income house and other things like that, you know, for decades here. And so be sure to ask, are all of these homes going to be independently certified Energy Star? Because it's not just the cost of the home, it's the utility bill that people that live in have to pay every month that make it an affordable house. Are they going to be certified through U.S. Green Building Council Certification, every home? Are they going to be built to a good standard? You know, that is safe for the occupants and sustainable and environmentally friendly and healthy. So please ask these questions of the builder. You know, I've worked with very large builders before and very small builders. And, you know, I know what the general tendency is. So I thank you for your time.
Okay. Thank you. Commissioner Richardson, Mr. Mayor Protem, we are, we, we have good manners here at Leon County. And we've gone first on each of these issues. And we would like to respect and allow for all the city to go first on this.
Okay. We'll do it.
Mr. Mayor Protem. Good manners. Mr. Matlow.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Protem. I'm just going to go point by point because we heard a lot of things. First off, the conversation about affordable housing, Commissioner Proctor referred to the bait and switch. I don't believe this is a bait and switch because I don't think bait has actually been, been laid. I think a bait and switch was what we saw at the city with Canopy, when we had an inclusionary zoning policy that said 80% of AMI would be able to afford the housing. That meant if you made slightly less than the median income, you'd be able to buy a house there. We had to alter that policy after it was built to raise it to 100% of AMI. That's essentially market rate. The average person can buy a house in that area. I consider that a bait and switch. But what we heard tonight from Mr. Hunter respectfully was attempting and hopefully to build affordable housing. There's nothing in this text amendment that uses the word affordable. There's nothing being proposed tonight that speaks to affordable housing at all. It doesn't speak to different levels of income. It certainly doesn't speak to low, low or very low income housing at all. So that, that, this discussion is not about affordable housing. This discussion is about the urban services area. The current urban services area, as we continue to expand the USA, we don't have enough money to maintain what we already have. As, as was said earlier, there are new neighborhoods that come online. Those neighborhoods get their sidewalks replaced first. They get their streets repaid first. When trash gets dumped in a lot, that trash gets picked up. When you go along the right-of-way, that right-of-way is not maintained. That's not consistent through our entire urban services area now, because as we continue to expand, we don't have the resources to maintain our entire current area. When we look at the size of the urban services area, last year, we had the largest expansion of the urban services area. of the urban services area in history, nearly 4,000 acres. When that was being expanded, we were told we were combating sprawl. We were combating sprawl because we were going to plan this uniformly. We'd be able to not have the negative impacts that we see from piecemeal expansions like that are before us today. Today, we've been told that while we expanded 4,000 acres, there's no plans to develop it. So the first question is, why do we expand 4,000 acres all the way up to that line and not do it incrementally? If our intent is to expand our area equitably and incrementally, why do we do a 4,000-acre expansion that can serve the next 20 to 45 years of population? Now, when we look at the projections for the urban services area, and it's not an exact science of what can fit into certain areas and what can be developed within an area. When we look at our own staff projections, even eight years ago, we were projecting to have enough space to include before we even did the Walani expansion. I know there's been conversations about, you know, maybe you can't redevelop that parcel or that parcel, but we really don't know unless we actually hold the line and say we want to see things done differently. It was mentioned in public comments of if we want people of lower incomes to be able to live in our community, they need to be, we need to be building closer to grocery stores, we need to be building closer to transit lines, we need to be building closer to all these services. If we keep expanding our urban services area, we're creating more traffic issues that were proposed, that were mentioned earlier. We already have traffic issues on Tharp Street where we still don't have sidewalks. Kids walk around on dirt trails to school on Tharp Street. The traffic issues on Orange Avenue, traffic issues at Capital Circle in Mahan. As we add more traffic issues, that's going to be another traffic problem that we're going to address. And if history is any judge, those traffic issues will probably leapfrog some of the traffic issues that we already have. We saw the Northeast Gateway leapfrog all of those projects for development that hasn't even been done yet. So the more we continue to move in this direction, the more the areas that really need our tax dollars to invest the most get overlooked. So I don't think, I can't support this because it's not based on anything except a developer is asking. It's not based on any type of unified plan that we put forward as a community. It's not based on any fundamental planning principle. It's just based on a request. And if we always just take requests, we just really don't have an urban services area line at all. We'll just continue to expand and continue to approve it. So based on all of that, I can't support the option before us today. Thank you, Mr. Mayor Protem.
Thank you, sir. Any other comments or questions? Commissioner Porter.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Protem. I have a question for staff or whomever. This question about concurrency and the financial impact, what, if any, analysis do we do to evaluate that?
Yes, Commissioner. So at the comprehensive plan stage, we do a very high-level analysis. What we're doing at this stage is looking at allowable uses, maximum, minimum densities and intensities. The following step after comp plan and rezoning would be the site plan process for the city that goes through our city's growth management department. For the county, it goes through the development support and environmental management. At that stage, they come in with an actual development plan, and then you do a concurrency analysis based on that. So that's when you would generate, this is how many vehicular trips would be resulting from this development. Also with that, what kind of mitigation would be required, financial, and then like actual roadway improvement kind of things that would be required of that. And that's when you also look at all of the other infrastructure to ensure that you meet that concurrency threshold. So it's really more at the site plan level, but we do a very high-level analysis at this point, really for planning purposes.
Okay. And the high-level analysis, what did you learn from that?
From the high-level analysis, we learned that if they build out at the maximum of the three sites, that they would have to pay concurrency for roadway improvements. Again, that was based on, you know, what is the maximum amount you could do per the zoning district? So for two of them, eight units per acre, and then one of them would be the 3.63 units per acre. And so it did show that if theoretically they built to the max, they would exceed some of the capacity, not by a lot, but by some on Appalachian Parkway. But again, there's other things you have to do on the site, so chances of them doing the maximum, probably not. There was no concern from the school board when we sent them the school impact analysis forms. They indicated that there would not be a problem accommodating the growth in the schools. And then working with the utility providers, that there was the ability to connect to water and sewer for all of the sites. The developer would be responsible for providing those utilities throughout the site. Ultimately, after the developer pays for and is responsible for that infrastructure, it does get dedicated over, if it's the city utilities, to the city. And then at that point, there's a revenue stream for the maintenance of it through user fees and property taxes and those kind of things. So there was no major red flags for that during the desktop concurrency or, yeah, overall infrastructure concurrency analysis, and it'll just get more refined as the process goes forward.
Okay. And do, does that consider, and I understand at a high level, any projected costs from continuing maintenance?
Because of the way our utilities are set up, the maintenance of it is covered through the user fees and the property taxes generated by the development, which is why we have certain thresholds for density, because we want to ensure that, you know, instead of going from one unit for 10 acres, we're going to four and eight units per acre to ensure that there's enough property taxes there.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
I'll be quick. I mean, I think that I've been pretty clear about how I feel about this. I do feel like this fundamentally is suburban sprawl. I don't think it's consistent with even our own, at the city, our strategic plan for how we want to grow. I think that this form of growth management is frankly, and we have seen in other communities and even in our own, it's toxic to our environment, it's toxic to our health, it's an inefficient use of our precious resources. And the thing that, although we have considered some alternatives, I don't feel like we have to the extent that we need to, to meet the infrastructure needs we have and the affordable housing needs that we have, which has been, the housing needs full stop in the city. So no matter where we go from here, that's something that I know we're all discussing on our individual boards, but that I really want us to see, want us to take much more aggressive action in the urban infill, in the difficult conversations that go alongside that, and in making the best use of the existing urban services area. I mean, if we could just continue to expand it, you know, this whole, I understand the point of bordering or part of the urban services area. But I mean, think about the logical extension of that argument. You could just infinitely expand it if it's always touching the urban services area. So I don't necessarily find that compelling. So I'm just concerned about the direction we're taking with growth management, and I really want us to see us reconsider. Thank you.
Okay. Commissioner Williams-Cox.
Mayor Protem, thank you. You know, once upon a time, I know this because of history, not because I was here, Tallahassee was dirt roads, horses and wagons, and it was very small. But as people continued to move here and as slaves continued to build this city, it moved out even to the areas that once slave owners owned property for the purpose of growing. We are at a crossroad in our city. On one hand, some folks want us to be more aggressive. We need more housing. My son just bought a house. The market, there's very, there are very few houses on the market, so the prices are here. He's out there, he was out there battling with folks who had cash to buy houses. Fortunately, he was able to find one on the south side. We have got to really figure out what we're, what we really want to do, and we need to do it and be consistent. Now, the last time we had this discussion, I said what I said and I meant what I said. We have expanded to the north, and it's now time to expand to the south. And I live on the south side, I've lived on the south side for 30-plus years. I'm ready to support smart growth on the south side and to Commissioner Proctor, Mr. Chair's bringing folks in from the south side in areas that need to be annexed in so that they can also get off a septic and come to sewer. In order to do that, then we have to take services out there so that these things can be done. We have been challenged to come up with housing solutions to the point where we were all paraded in front of a church full of folk with a microphone in front of us saying yes or no, whether we agree to do, do some things that will create housing, a low-income or affordable housing. So now, I understand that some folks don't want this to happen in their backyard, but I do want it to happen in my backyard because I know in order for our city to grow, we've got to have places for people to live. We want to retain talent that we produce from Florida A&amp;M and from Florida State, TCC, where we've got to have somewhere to house them, we've got to have somewhere to put professionals, we've got to have somewhere where young professionals will want to stay. We've got to have places for families with a backyard. It was very important to me that my son and his wife got a house with a backyard for my grandson. That's very important. I didn't want him in a zero lot, because that's not healthy. He needed running space. So we people on the south side want the same thing that other people want on other sides of town. And we wanted quality, and we do want to be able to afford it. And there is a definition for what affordable housing is, and it has nothing to do with utilities. It's a federal definition. So I think that what we have here is an opportunity to educate so that we're speaking the same language, and we've had workshops, colleagues together, to talk about the different types of housing so that we can educate ourselves and we can educate others. And I am ready to support this. As I've said in the past, we have got to grow this city. We need jobs, we need housing, we need a lot of things. But if we don't provide, provide opportunities for shelter, then what are we really doing? Kudos to the Sheriff's Office. I saw today that they're agreeing to do something with the folks who don't have shelter that are out in the area around the shelter. But people are not moving to Tallahassee to live like that. They're wanting to have decent housing, just like folks on other parts of town. And those of us who live on the south side of town, we don't want to move to the northeast side of town in order to have quality, adequate housing. We love living on the south side. Let me speak for me. I love living on the south side. It's within a five-mile radius, everything I need. And so I'm going to support this because I believe that together we can get to where we need to get to. But if we do a hard stop, don't, don't do this, wait till we need it, no future planning where we're then rushing to do it, I just don't think that that's how we do it very smart. So I am ready to support this. And I saw my, our colleague, Commissioner Jimbo Jackson's picture up when we came in, and I'm reminded that we had this conversation with him in the room, sitting right over there. And I wish he was here so he could go ahead and give, agree with me, as he did the last time we spoke, that we've got to move on the south side. We cannot continue to remain idle and hope for something to happen. We've got to help something happen so that we can have housing for all who want to live in Tallahassee. Thank you.
Let me see if the mayor, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Protem. I agree with Commissioner Diane Williams-Cox, and I'm prepared to second her motion, if she made one, and vote in favor.
So moved. Okay. There's a motion by Commissioner Williams-Cox, seconded by the mayor. Commissioner Porter.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Protem. And I'll be quick. I just, especially for the benefit of the public and those who spoke, you know, there are different ideas about how you grow, and I don't want anyone to walk away from this conversation thinking that the only option for growing or growing responsibly or providing housing or low-income housing is to expand the urban services area. I have a master's in urban planning. Our, our great staff have masters and other experience, and so do the people on this body. But that's why we're here, is to use our judgment about different, different ways of approaching these issues. So, you know, it's not, the question is not, do we support housing or not? Do we support infrastructure and investment in the south side or not? There are many different ways that many different cities, I mean, I'm sure you all have traveled, you watch TV, you see different cities look differently. That's because of their planning priorities and objectives and management styles. I believe that it is possible for Tallahassee to have affordable housing, low-income housing, urban infill, maintain our beautiful parks, our Canopy roads. I do believe that that is possible. I don't see this as being the way forward, but I still believe in all of those things and, and we'll get there. But I just want for the benefit of the public to know that there are different ways of approaching these issues and to not accept the, the false choices that we are sometimes given. Thank you.
I will, I'm going to weigh in, and I'm telling you, I'm going to support this as well. And I guess I would start by, you know, because a lot of people can talk the talk, but they don't walk the walk. 30 years ago, 30 years ago, I moved to the south side of town because I saw the potential that existed there. I started as a renter, and my landlord, Dr. Henry Lewis, who's a good friend of mine, sold me some property, and my wife and I built our home there. We've been in it for 26 years now, and that was during a time when you didn't find many people at all choosing to live on the south side of town. But again, I saw, my wife and I saw the potential in that area, and it had been neglected. Previous commissions had not put the infrastructure in place to allow for the kind of growth that was necessary on that side of town. 20 years ago, I served on the Blueprint Committee when we were looking at infrastructure to accommodate the growth that was happening in this city at the time. And we had gotten so far behind that we had to do something to catch up from an infrastructure position. And so we, we came together, neighborhood representatives, the business community, because we were the environmentalists, we were all at loggerheads as to how this community would grow and where it would grow. And that's what brought about the Blueprint 2000 and Beyond Plan. And we went to the community, and the community passed a one-cent sales tax to fund that infrastructure. But unfortunately, as we saw over 20 years, the majority of those projects went north of town. And so we, when I had the opportunity to run for the commission, I knew that I had to represent the side of town where I lived and where I knew that there needed to be growth and there needed to be proper infrastructure. So as we approached the 20-year conclusion of that first sales tax increase, and I was appointed to the Sales Tax Committee, I was vice chair of the Sales Tax Committee under Steve Evans, there were several of us on that committee, Kristy Henry and Terrence Henson and others, who said, we've got to address the infrastructure issues that are, that are needed on the south side of town. Long story short, right now, 18 of the 32 infrastructure projects that we are about to fund are on the south side of town. That's road projects, infrastructure, sidewalks. And, and you know, it's interesting because some of the... Uh, and, and you know, it's interesting because some of the very projects that I advocated for when I first came to the commission addressed those very issues on Putnam and Pope Drive and Texas Street in South City. Mothers were literally pushing baby strollers in the middle of the street because there were no sidewalks. The roads were in terrible condition because it had not been maintained. And, and so I'm proud today. If you, if you go down Putnam and Pope, you'll see very nice sidewalks and they're connected by the sidewalks on Texas Street because that's where we began to put an emphasis. It, it wasn't just about housing, but it was that infrastructure to be put in place for housing, for businesses, to create jobs, to grow the economy. It wasn't just about housing, although that's an important element of it. And as you all know, we have done a number of things as a city and jointly with the county to address our housing issues in this community. We've got our inclusionary housing ordinance. We, we pass an ordinance that allows developers to reimagine old hotels and motels so that we can address the housing issue. We've worked with the Big Ben, um, what's the commission, Continuum of Care? Uh, to address housing issues, low income and affordable housing. I'm, I'm thrilled and we've got some issues to address there too, but what we're doing with the Orange Avenue Apartments, uh, and making those low income apartments more attractive to the people who live there. But, but we, we have allowed growth to happen on the north side of town, uh, and we need growth. And, and that's what our comprehensive plan is all about. I was, I happened to live here when the comprehensive plan was established to address those very, how we would grow and where we would grow. And yet, uh, we have not done so very much on the south side of town and it's time that that happens. And so that's why I supported, uh, the English property development because we've got to start looking at how this community can grow equitably. It's not to pit one side of the community against the other. We are all one community here in Tallahassee and Leon County. And that's how I've always approached, uh, how I govern, is looking at this as an, an entire community and you make the case for where the needs are. And this is one of those, those instances where the needs are on the south side of Tallahassee, uh, to be able to create an environment that will draw people. You know, I, I, I'll say this and then I'll, I'll be done. You know, I had a conversation with a guy just this morning and we were talking about the fact that we're having such a difficult time, you know, uh, bringing amenities like a grocery store, like a Publix to the, to the south side of town. And that's because we, we, we don't have, uh, the population with the discretionary income. And so we, we've got to have a broader mix, uh, in those areas that we're talking about. We can't concentrate all of the affordable housing, uh, in the south side of town. We've had that same conversation with the Tallahassee Lenders Consortium. And I, I told them, it's, it's, what does that do to the community when you have all of that housing concentrated in one area? What impact does that have on the schools? And so we need a broader mix of housing, uh, on the south side of Tallahassee. And so that's why I would support, and I think the staff has done a tremendous job in making a compelling case, uh, for why we need to expand the urban, urban services area, uh, and to be able to accommodate the growth that we know is going to occur. Let's not let happen what happened 25 years ago when we let the, the, the growth direct us. We have an opportunity to grow smartly and to determine where the growth is going to occur and how it's going to occur. And so that's why I will support the proposed amendments to our comprehensive plan that are before us today. So with that, we've got a motion and a second. Uh, all of those who are in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. Aye?
Aye.
All of those opposed? Nay?
Nay.
The motion carries three to two with Commissioners Matlow and Porter in opposition. Mr. Chairman.
Man, we tried to give y'all an inch and y'all just, you know, you said, why we?
You know, yeah. I mean, they showed out. We wouldn't do that at y'all's house, but it's okay. We would.
Yeah, we would.
I take that back. We would do that. You would do that. I know you would. Uh, our vice chairman, uh, you weigh in, get us started here on the county side.
Thank you. I actually enjoyed the conversation. I thought it was pretty, uh...
I didn't notice city fuss like that. I thought it was just our family.
I don't think, I don't, I thought we just, I thought it just happened to our family, you know?
It's our family's operating.
It's kind of like the staff come up and frame the issue. By the time you talk, you got all the, all the, uh, things on the table. So, uh, but when I was listening, I was, I was listening to what Commissioner Porter and what Commissioner Williams-Cox was talking about. And what it brought to mind was a conversation, a few conversations I've had with, um, the late, great Dr. Pam Hall. And it's about, you know, when you, when you think about these things, you, you think about them holistically. There's not, you said, you said it best, there's not one way to get this done. There's multiple ways to get this done. And I think that while, while both of you had a point, I think both of you were right. We do have to do something on the inside, but then we do have to look at other ways that, that, that we may be able to do things that, that were more, um, more towards growing out. So growing out and growing up, but what you want to do, uh, and I, and I agree with you on this, Commissioner Porter, is you want to limit how much you grow out. Um, I think 12 years over the past, 12, I mean, 12, 12 years, 51%? Since 97? I mean, 12 times? I think that's, that's pretty outstanding that we've been able to toe that line considering the fact that we've grown 51%. How much more are we going to grow over the next 10 to 15 years, right? Um, you know, it, it, when I, I was also thinking about the, the thought of, there's a lot of talk about creating affordable housing in those areas that this urban service area would expand to and, and the developer coming in and putting in infrastructure and things of that nature. Um, I would, I would, I would hope that when, when, when they're doing those things, they're going to consider the fact that the infrastructure has to be put in and that they can create a pricing, a pricing that is affordable. Because I mean, when you look at the prices of, of houses these days, you, you, you about can't afford anything.
True.
Um, so, so I'm, um, and I, and I guess I, I got a, I got a question for staff on that. Artie? Good question. So, so when you, when you're looking at, this is more conceptual than anything, when you're looking at building new and, and, and putting in the infrastructure in the urban services area, uh, uh, in the expansion of urban service area versus going inside, let's say redeveloping or, or, uh, refurbishing an old house? Um, talk to me a little bit about how that, that, that the cost savings can be to create urban, I mean, create affordable housing when you have a, a new piece of land that's coming on and needs that infrastructure? Um, how do you create a situation where, where the cost isn't so, um, so, so high that you have to, to have a high cost that's passed on to the, uh, house owner or the, the person?
So I'll caveat my response with, I'm not a developer.
Yeah, I understand.
But my understanding is, uh, so if you do, uh, something like is proposed, you have kind of the raw land, you extend the infrastructure, but because of the number of units you're building, you, uh, basically kind of, it's kind of the concept of shopping at Costco versus shopping somewhere else because you get, uh, all the parts and pieces in bulk. So you, you get better pricing.
Right.
And so you're able to keep the cost lower.
Right. So, so that, thank you, that's all I wanted. So when we were talking about that out versus up, I mean, he just gave us a good example of how out can create affordable housing in, in neighborhoods that we, uh, parts of town that we never had before. Do I think it's far past time that we have development, new development on the south side that, that mirrors that of, of what we had on the north side? Of course it is. Uh, it's far past the time. And when I remember in 10, when I was first elected, the conversations around, okay, so when are we going to get the same amenities, the same restaurants, the same look of what you have on the north side down here on the south side? It's coming. When you think about what we're going to do on the fairground, we're thinking about this, these, these, uh, developments is coming. When you think about even Orange Avenue, what's going to happen there? What you're going to see is that you're going to, you're going to see a change aesthetically in what the south side looks like. But what's important here is not to change aesthetically. What's important here is that it looks demographically the way it looked in 2010. What I don't want is a situation where our people have to change their zip code in order to change the way that they live. You understand? I don't want, I don't want those people who live there now to have to move further south. I want to create a situation where they can come right back in that place. That's what I liked about the Orange Av- Orange Avenue development. Hundred percent of the people that live there can come back there. Will there be some market rate there? Yeah, there'll be some market rate there, but there'll be more dwellings. A hundred percent of the people who live there will be able to come back. You talk about that diversity, I think it was when we were talking about the grocery store. The diversity of, of, of income and diversity of folks that are there will, will allow for more of those amenities and people to be able to patronize those things. I just, I'm excited about the menu of options that we're putting together to tackle this problem. I'm excited that we're getting ahead of the game instead of being behind the game. I think the reason that we're in this situation right now is because we didn't have, well, I won't put it on, I, I would say that unintended consequences of not being able to anticipate 51% growth. I mean, who would have thought? Who would have thought in 90, what, 96, 97, that 51%? Well, I, I wasn't here. Well, I was, I was in North Carolina at the time, but if you did...
We, we've had 800 people per day since 1980 coming.
My point is, if you did, you might've thought it, but nobody really planned for it to the point that we don't have to consider extending, extending and doing other things right now. So, um, I'm going to support it. Um, like I said, I think both Commissioner Porter and Commissioner, uh, Williams-Cox were right. I think we have to create a menu that, that gives people options on how we do this thing. And I don't, and I'm not a big fan of, of expanding the urban service area a bunch, but I think, I think in this case it makes sense. I think if we come back here five years from now and have to do the same thing again, I think we've, we, we failed in, in, in trying to create that menu. But I think right now we're in, we're in a good sweet spot. It allows the, the diversity of options here and I, I'm going to support it. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. Commissioner Cummings.
Thank you, uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. I appreciate the, the conversation coming from the city commissioners, the lively, the historic background that I always get from, from my, my fellow, uh, city commissioner. But this is very serious. Uh, in my opinion, in reading the information that was provided by staff, uh, Mr. Chair, I appreciate the holistic approach that staff has, has taken to bring this agenda item to us for, for this, uh, for this public hearing. We look at the fact that Tallahassee has grown tremendously. They provided analysis on the number of individuals that are projected to move here within the next 20, uh, next 20, over 100,000 people. We also have statistics where the last 30 years, we have over 100,000 people that have, have moved here. Uh, staff also did an analysis, uh, Mr. Chair, in our information that indicates that we're behind the eight ball when it comes to providing housing, not just affordable housing, but housing. We're also concerned, and it's not specifically mentioned here, but we have to be concerned about not only affordable housing, but about our people being able to afford housing at all. We've got to be concerned about, uh, their, uh, their income, the rate of, of, the rate of, of pay. We've got households, over 16% of households in Leon County spend over 50% of their monthly income for housing. Tallahassee is growing. We want to be attractive to maintain our children here. We want our children to move back here. We want to, to have fostered, um, businesses and partnerships with the universities and with our small businesses and our established businesses so that Tallahassee is attractive, not just to our children, but to the larger population. So we, we have got to, uh, make sure that we, I believe, a- as a commission, are sitting here looking at the potential for, for Tallahassee and for, uh, Leon County. I'm certainly concerned about growth. I want our growth to be measured, to be planned. We're concerned about urban sprawl. Um, I look at the number of, um, of acreage as far as infill, but we don't really control that acreage, the infill. We don't control the parcels and the lots within the urban service area. Now, I think we are optimistic of, of those, um, parcels in the acreage where it's part of a development. It was, as was pointed out in our information, but we have no control over, uh, over infill. So I think we have got to be proactive as far as growing Tallahassee, as far as development. I believe we have parameters in place. When developers want to build, when they want to expand, they don't just go willy-nilly and do it. They have to go through a permitting process. And I think we've got those parameters, uh, in place, Mr. Chair, to make sure it's measured, uh, to make sure our growth is, uh, is, is good growth, credible growth. We look at all the, um, the various aspects that make us a great place to live, like the environmental, environmental concerns, our water quality. All of those areas are addressed when, when developers apply for developing, uh, a particular parcel or developing, uh, uh, an area. So I believe that we as the elected body have to have a holistic approach, uh, to this. And I don't think we can be closed minded in one area and open minded in another. I think if, if we, um, look at the expansion of the ur- urban services area and recognize that we have got city services that have to be provided in order to move forward with those particular developments. And this is not going to happen overnight. Um, I know there's been a lot of talk about the Walani expansion, but also recognize that there is nothing on the table as far as expanding right now. We don't have any plans. So I think as far as expanding the, the urban services area as being proposed in this particular amendment, we've got the parameters in place. If there's a planned development, it will be scrutinized. Uh, we've got able individuals that work for the county, that work for city, that work in the various departments, I believe, that will make sure that this plan, the development is planned and that it is a plan that is in the best interest of our citizens and, and the best interest, um, of the county, in the best interest of the city as well. Um, uh, Mr. Chair, so I will, um, I will be in support of this particular, um, this particular amendment.
Very good. Um, Mr. Mayor Protem, I remember when, just a few weeks ago, Commissioner Cummings, if you ask a way in, it'd take about two minutes at the most. She's been around Commissioner Dozier. Did you see I rubbed off? I'm just saying. Oh, okay. I'm just saying, it's just... Commissioner Minor.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. When we last talked about these, uh, complaint amendments, um, I had asked Representative from D.R. Horton to come and give us a sense for the, the, the price range of some of the housing. Understanding that if things are very preliminary, there's no, there's no PUD application, nothing like that on the drawing board, but I'd like to, I'd like to actually ask that question again, if you don't mind, if it's, or if it's Mr. Hunter or, or the other representative from D.R. Horton. If you could, if you could come and give us a breakdown, as best you can, of the price range of the, of the homes that would be, that you'd expect to provide within these three, um, expansions of the USA?
Thank you. State your name again, please, and address for record.
Stuart Hare, and, uh, thank you, Commissioners. So, uh, Commissioner Minor to address the question. We're trying, uh, nationally, essentially, to, to come up with a plan in areas where we see need to pool our resources, to buy in bulk, to... need to pool our resources, to buy in bulk, to get ahead of the price of piping, to get ahead of the interest rate rising very quickly, and actually to down payment assistance so that we're providing housing that is not so low, frankly, that people don't want to come behind it and buy it. The benefit of housing is the equity that you get off of it later. That is the, besides living there while you're there, housing needs to have done something beneficial to your finances while you're there and the community at large. We're trying to stay, you know, really, I would say, mid-high 200s into the low 300s, but on top of that, we would like to provide down payment assistance in most of our areas that's anywhere from $5,500 to $7,500. It doesn't come out of the pocket of our home buyers. The other thing we're trying to do is go ahead and get out in front of the interest rate blocks so that as the interest rate rises, and I think the last thing I heard was a full point rise is expected within the next 30 days, to go ahead and get enough of a rate block purchased so that we can say, you know, we can provide a lower rate and thus a lower, you know, monthly payment on top of that down payment assistance. Because really, a lot of the issue sometimes is not everybody has the cash in pocket or in difficult financial or economic times to save for down payment. So we try to help with both those measures in addition to essentially providing a house that is as low as we can, where things are, but still of a quality that they do meet all of the state and local codes, and in addition, the energy requirements to be efficient homes. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much, sir. I really appreciate it. Well, for me, there are two key elements that I kind of considered in trying to decide on how to go on this amendment as well as the others. One was, are these proposals going to help us address the affordable housing shortage? And number two is, is there a clear need to expand the USA, the urban services area? I'm not opposed to expanding the urban services area if we can demonstrate that expanding it is a necessity. But, you know, just in recent, last year or so, we've had the Walani expansion, which is going to provide, at a maximum, it won't be this many likely, but at a maximum of 12,500 homes. We have, the city commissioner, our colleagues here, recently approved an expansion of the PUD for the English development to go from 494 acres to 740 acres. And that's within the urban services area. And that's just north of the Woodville Highway USA expansion request, just north of it. That's already within the USA, 740 acres. And then we also have 1,500 homes coming to Falls Chase. These are just some of the things that are going on. And listen, a reasonable person could vote to support these three expansions. I get that, and some of you are. For me, though, it comes down to, we spent a lot of time talking about how this is allowable, but not enough time talking about why it's necessary. You know, there was, one of the constituents sent us a letter, and it says really, I think it encapsulates what I'm saying here, is that the intent for the urban services area is to guide the location of development rather than for the proposed development to guide the expansion of this urban services area. That's really what the USA is for, is to help us figure out where we're going to grow in a smart way to, as much as we can, it's not always practical, but as much as we can, provide infill and reduce sprawl. And like I said, a reasonable person could vote either way on this. But for me, the scales are not tipped far enough on these two points with the clarity that I need to vote in favor of it. So I'm going to vote to decline on this amendment and the others that are coming up. I want to thank D.R. Horton for their interest. We want people to look at opportunities for helping us grow in Leon County. We need these types of people coming and showing interest. It's a tough decision, though, and we all want to grow in a smart way that reduces sprawl, that encourages infill, that provides affordable housing so that people can, people and their families can live in a nice, safe home that they can be proud of. And for me, the scale is just not tipped far enough for me to support the expansion. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner Minor. Commissioner Welch, would you care to weigh in before Commissioner Dozier and I take the next three hours?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I would like to weigh in. I will reiterate what I have said before about this specific set of amendments. For me, I try not to focus on the things I don't know and focus on the things that I do, okay? And so for me, we have a problem in Leon County with the supply of housing. That is a relatively simple observation to make, in my opinion. I'm a bit of a real estate nerd. I look at the real estate listings fairly regularly, very familiar with them in the Northeast in my part of the county. But I think that a lot of the prices that we see, a lot of the price restriction and the limitation on availability and all of those things, that is driven by a lack of supply. And I think any Realtor in the county would tell you, we have a historical lack of real estate supply, which is driving these prices. It's driving a ripple effect through the market, whether it's rents or it's new start construction or existing home sales. It's a real problem, and that's a problem we know we have. Now, I can understand and sympathize with my colleagues who are concerned about expanding the urban services area and concerned about the precedent that that set for us as a community in terms of how we grow and what we're prioritizing. But I think when you look at it pragmatically and you recognize that you have a historic housing shortage in Leon County, that is going to prevent a lot of people from buying a home, from gathering the equity that homeownership provides. It's going to provide, it's going to create a lot of problems for the future. Now, we can debate how much we're growing or at what rate we're growing or whether we're growing, even though the data would suggest that we are and that we are going to need more housing. But to the extent that we need more housing, we may be able to debate, but to the extent that we know we don't have enough housing now, it's really not debatable. We don't have enough housing. Our housing market is very tight. And when I see a complan amendment like this, in which we are expanding the urban service area to adjacent areas where we have a national home builder who wants to come in and build at scale, who can access product at scale, again, we go back to the supply and demand issues that we're experiencing across this country, where we've gone through a pandemic and new housing starts have been substantially limited, and therefore, you've got this pent-up demand and you don't have any supply. And now you have a national home builder that wants to come into the south side of our county and invest in building homes where they can buy product in bulk, they can, as we've heard the gentleman say before, they can lock in rates, they can provide down payment assistance, they can buy 10,000 windows at a time when they're building these houses. And that provides a scale that will make houses more affordable in theory. And so I think when you take into account all of that information, which we can fairly certainly say we know is true, it trumps those things that we don't know. So again, I say, we can't let what we don't know scare us from what we do know or take action on what we do know. And we do know that we have a housing problem. And I think everybody in our community deserves the right to be able to buy a house. And I think that if we build more supply, be able to satisfy demand, and it will have a ripple effect across the market because people will be buying houses and then they will be opening up, that will open up rental units that they were previously living in. And so I can understand and sympathize with all the concerns about concurrency and traffic and schools, but I also trust our staff has addressed those issues as they have said, and they feel like these are appropriate actions to take. And so I think it's a micro versus macro concern, and I certainly understand the folks who look at it from the micro perspective. But I feel like in the big picture, our county needs housing, and these expansions, these complan amendments will help facilitate the construction of new housing. So I will support them. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Very good. Commissioner Dozier, I'm really limiting you to at least no more than 90 minutes.
All right. You done now? Okay. So if I get nine, you get nine, right? You heard him? Did he agree? Okay. Or whatever I get, you get. How about that? All right. Good discussion. I got to say at the outset here that since two of these three proposals are in District Five, County Commission District Five, I think there could be some times in this discussion, and I'm not faulting anyone for this, because we got a lot of big issues on our minds. We deal with a lot of big issues. But there are points in this discussion where I believe that some of the constituents in District Two and District Five are thinking, did they go to a different agenda item? Because we're not actually talking about the expansion of the USA and as it pertains to the impact on Twin Lakes and on grassroots and on Southwood Plantation Road and on Woodville and on other areas. So, I mean, we've got, and I say that because we have so many big issues, the 12 of us, that we need to discuss and dig into, and we've had time to do that. Commissioner Maddox, you mentioned that great conversation we had at the last Transmittal complan workshop about infill versus USA expansion. I love that. We need to have those conversations. But there's a tension here in my perspective, when we get to a proposal that we got to vote on one map amendment or one USA expansion amendment or something like that, where we are arguing about, is it affordable housing, is it not? What's the population growth, is it not? All these different things. And the rules are what they are. I mean, that's, we can change policy anytime we want, maybe not anytime we want, but we can change policy. We can change how we do this. We can give staff direction. But once we have policy and a process, it doesn't matter what the company is. It doesn't matter whether they're doing affordable housing or not. Did they follow that process or did they not? And I've had to look at friends and family for years and say, I keep invoking them privately, so I might as well do it publicly. I got to look at my aunt and uncle and say, yes, you will have an Amazon fulfillment center in your backyard, literally in your backyard. Sometimes we just got to do that because the zoning is what it is. So I say that upfront because I think there's a lot of things we've covered in this meeting and the last one that we should go back and look at the policy. Because if we don't want to get to this point without, for example, I'm not sure who asked about concurrency, maybe it was Commissioner Porter, and already said if they build to the max, it triggered concurrency on Appalachia Parkway. I'm really curious where the mobility fee question is, because concurrency has never worked. We've been working on mobility fee. We don't need to jump into that right now, but we should have a mobility fee and not a concurrency program right now. And, but that doesn't matter because these three are under the existing rules. And if they don't trigger that, they don't trigger it and they don't pay in. And it's going to impact the next developments down the line, and we will have less money for transportation. So we are, we're debating a lot of these issues, but we're not doing ourselves any favors because we get the same proposals year after year after year because we nibble around the edges and we're not making big policy discussions. We talk about it, but we're not doing it. So I think this, these two commissions, we've gotten into some good discussions, and I know we can't make motions at this meeting for joint workshops or other things like that. We'd have to do that respectively. But I say, we need time to dig into some of these other policy discussions. So I may hit on a couple of those, but I needed to bring that out generally because I'm now going to have to look at, again, my friends in grassroots, in Twin Lakes and others, and I got to reflect on where the rules are right now and whether or not these proposals meet those standards like they did with Walani, like they did with others. So affordable housing, I'm just going to work through this list because y'all brought up a lot of good issues and citizens have as well. And for everyone who lent their public comments in the emails, we have a limited number of people speaking tonight, but we had a lot of comments in the emails and really appreciate all of the detailed research in that as well. We, city and county, both have inclusionary housing policy in development right now. I'm looking at county administrator. That's about next spring, right, that we expect to see that come back? If any of these developments get in the permitting pipeline prior to that point, they will not be bound by that policy. It's only people who come after that policy is enacted, correct?
Yeah.
So this, whether or not this is affordable, I think actually Commissioner Welch just hit on it, it's more about supply. It's about housing in general, it's whether or not supply. So I can't make a judgment call on these developments based on whether or not it's affordable housing. I appreciate what D.R. Horton has said about, I'm sorry, Stuart, I was just saying, Mr. Hare has said about the, yeah, it's been a long day. The interest rate, the, all of those different programs, yes, the down payment assistance, but they could change their mind. I'm not saying you will, but it's not part of these, I mean, appreciate you bringing it into that, but that's not what we're deciding today. Some folks were bringing up water quality. Bob, thank you. We'll call Springs Alliance and others. And I think the point about expanding, you know, the water and sewer services, I'm going to come to that in one second, but we could have a policy to limit the type of landscaping or fertilizer use below the scarab, but we can't do that right now. That would have to be a city policy in growth management, something like that, that would limit that, and that may help improve water quality there. But I do think there is an interesting tension when we hear the staff analysis on expanding the USA. Yes, as you all pointed out in your letter, it's supposed to go where services exist. That's where the USA is. But when we expand it, they obviously don't have them there already, and that's on the developer. So it's, I think some of our language is very confusing because I can read into those analysis by We'll Call Springs Allowance, by Mr. Blair, by others, that it doesn't meet all of our criteria, but these are undeveloped parcels that are being asked to be brought into the USA so they wouldn't have water and sewer in the first place. The maintenance question, I think we've gone over that a lot, and I'm not sure the city fees cover everything and property tax covers everything. There's a lot of other things that gets factor concurrency and mobility, but again, we got to look at what is in front of us in this proposal. That's on city and county to cover those unmet needs. If, I mean, frankly, if we don't plan responsibly, we will pay later, and we do often. And so that is why we got to get ahead of these things. So asking questions actually helps sometimes. A number of folks, grassroots, you're mentioning April Road. So this is one of the big questions that came up in our workshop in March, and I want to verify this with staff, and Arti, maybe you need to jump into this because I know we've got, this was not in the March or in our workshop agenda, but it was in Transmittal, correct, that Leon County policy will supersede. So if the development has access to Appalachia Parkway, they will not be able to have a connection point on a canopy road, St. Augustine Road. Is that correct?
If they have existing access, they cannot add any additional accesses to the canopy road.
Okay. It's bold and underlined in the agenda item, so clarify that for me. Will the April Road development be able to gain access to St. Augustine Road? It's, in the item, it says pretty clear, and this is what we talked about in April, that they would not have access to St. Augustine Road because Appalachia Parkway, they can connect Appalachia Parkway?
My understanding, and I'll ask PSEM if I say something incorrect or if they can chime into it, is the April Road exists, so that is an existing access, but they're not allowed to add any access to that, only what exists today.
Can anyone else clarify that for me? Because it's, this was a major point of, I mean, I was just gonna go on because I was gonna use this to say, hey, you clarified this for us. And people felt a lot better in the neighborhood that there wouldn't be a lot of traffic put on a canopy road because of the safety issues and everything. That's what happened at our Transmittal hearing. So I was about to go on here, but if that's not the case, need to know that. Mr. County Administrator is?
So Ryan making his way up?
Thank you. Thank you, Ryan. I'm sorry to put you in the hot seat here, but again, I thought this was already clarified.
Yeah. If you have access another way, essentially, you're not allowed to have a connection to a canopy road.
So if you have access a different way, you cannot put your new traffic? And April Road is, I mean, that road's not gonna carry the capacity for this neighborhood, right?
Well, you would, you would have to build up the infrastructure in order to create something there or obviously, you know, utilize Appalachia Parkway.
Okay. Would they be allowed to build up April Road to use that existing access on Old St. Augustine Road?
That would be more of a Public Works call than it would be over at DSEM.
Okay.
Okay.
All right.
That would be part of the site plan review process.
Okay. Thank you very much. I'm not gonna keep you in the hot seat.
No problem.
Mr. County Administrator, this is extremely different than what we talked about at the Transmittal hearing and what I have shared with constituents, or sorry, what we shared with constituents at that meeting about April Road. Because it did seem pretty distinct in the item. But I will, how about this? I'll give y'all a second and I'll continue. And if you get an answer for me, that'd be appreciated. So I was trying to say there that if we ask questions, we get some clarity and we have information that comes in the agenda items over time. And hopefully we will figure that part out. My biggest concerns on this, Mr. Chair, and I'm not timing myself because that doesn't count against me.
No, no. You got an hour and 20 minutes.
Yeah. So my biggest concern, yes, the quality of life is a concern. Understand that. Again, that's why I'm saying the rules, I mean, we are adjacent to USA. There are other developments. I have a hard time seeing this as different than some other expansions that we have passed. And those rules have to be applied consistently. But the traffic impact, and yes, everyone, you know, most of that comes up in site plan review and other things like that. But whether or not we put pressure on canopy road, that is a critical issue. And Southwood Plantation Road isn't functioning very well at this point. And it's not safe at this point. So, okay, I got a little off track there. I'm gonna bring this in for Alani right now. But I, yes, Mr. Chairman, I'll let you speak, but I'd like to get an answer on the April Road before we move to a vote.
You would let, you would let me speak?
I will.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
I mean it that way. I will let you go ahead before I'm waiting for that unless we get that answer back, okay?
Might have an answer.
There. We got an answer.
Address that.
Yes, speaking to the April Road issue. Improving April Road all the way back through to the canopy road would not be something that we would require them to do. Obviously, access to the Parkway, that's the primary arterial, not a canopy road. We may require them to approve it to the Parkway, but making them approve it all the way back to the canopy road is just probably not gonna be in the mix.
Oh, wait, wait, wait. Could you, point of clarity?
Yeah, sorry.
Can you restate that?
Yeah, it's, I don't, I don't foresee that being something, obviously, we're gonna look at the transportation, we're gonna look at the concurrency, we're gonna look at the impacts on a much deeper level at the site plan level. And I think we touched on that earlier. One was asked, what do we look at at the comp plan level? But when we look at that at the site plan level, I don't anticipate that that would be a requirement on the developer, nor do I think the developer, of course, would want to do that. Yeah. Yeah.
Was that part of that high-level analysis that?
That would be part of the detailed analysis that would occur as we looked at the actual site plan itself and the environmental management permit and things of that sort. Yeah. And worked closely with Public Works to determine exactly what improvements might need to be made to accommodate the traffic and ensure that the levels of service on those roads is, stays where it is.
So that's, you mentioned in terms of intent was gonna. At this level, it seems that we should not be placed in the posture of gonna, what staff is gonna do for transportation analysis. That should have come with this to us tonight simultaneous with this ask. But we're placed to in a posture of what y'all gonna do.
Well, Commissioner, there's, there's a reason there's two different levels there. And so it's kinda like getting pre-approved for a loan, right? So when I'm getting pre-approved for a loan, they're looking at things generally to say, yeah, we believe that you qualify for this. When I actually go in to get that loan, they're gonna look in much more detail at what my credit history and things of that sort are. We don't have the number of homes, when you're considering a comp plan amendment, you have to consider what could be built under that land use category at that, at that moment. And it may be more than what they, they plan on building. So when we get to our level at DSEM, you're gonna be looking at a actual development program. So not theoretical, well, we allow, what, five units per acre? You got one acre, you get five units. We're gonna actually be looking at how many units are you actually going to build out there? That may be two, three? So that's why we hold off that more detailed analysis till we have a specific development program for the property. And then the numbers are all, they're all real numbers.
Yeah, but I wanna just say this, I'm not trying to take, once you give the, once we place in writing in law that, for instance, they could do five, and you all decide later that, no, we're gonna only let three, we've empowered them with a legal position to come back and hit aside there with a club and lawsuit. And I don't like that.
Oh, no, no, no. You're absolutely right in that they, when we're considering comp plan amendments and rezonings, we have to look at what the maximum buildout could be theoretically under that. But what usually comes back to us is something slightly different. It can never be more than what you're approving tonight. But it can be less than what you're approving tonight. Now, we would not tell them you have to do less unless they trip a concurrency threshold that they just can't fix. In other words, they, they say, yeah, we break that road to a point where it's, it drops below their adopted level of service. We don't have any desire to fix that road to that point, so we'll take this number of units instead of this number of units.
Good answer. Good answer. All right. Mr. Dozier, I apologize.
That's just fine.
Redeem your time.
Thank you, ma'am. Well, I think I can, I can see here why I and others were confused. Because this is attachment 21, page 11. Leon County Engineering Service will review site plans. This is the second to last paragraph on that page, the middle of it. Turn lanes, travel lanes, et cetera, et cetera, for roadways of April Road and Old St. Augustine Road if applicable. The next sentence, the subject site, and it's in bold, will not be granted access directly to Old St. Augustine Road as alternative access to the designated canopy road can be provided by April Road. That is the distinction here that we, that was kinda missed in the discussion. And I was asking questions about it and I missed this, that they would not be provided new access, a new road, but they can use that April Road access.
That is correct. So the development could access April Road, April Road could access?
Old St. Augustine.
The current connections. Now, when it gets to site plan, they may require improvements north to Appalachia Parkway and not south, so you still limit the traffic that's able to go south. It wouldn't be required to close an access unless DSEM at the site plan level said, you must close April Road.
Okay. We got a tension here. And it's all over, all of the questions that all of us have asked, whether you support this or not, that we have to make a massive change. And once you make the zoning change, once you make a comp plan change, something can be developed on these sites. Something can. It goes through our growth management, city or county. Something will be developed there. And we do it with very limited information. We're told time and again, and this is just our policy. I'm not challenging you guys, but gotta do the environmental when we get a site plan. We gotta do the traffic when we get a site plan. I think we should all be able to understand why the residents of Leon and Tallahassee have a hard time hearing that. They wanna know how it's gonna impact St. Augustine right now. They wanna know how it's gonna impact Wollala Springs right now. Southwood Plantation Road right now. We could change our policies, I'm guessing, to do some of that analysis more than a high level at this point in the process for certain large-scale amendments. Those are not the rules that we have right now. But I think we should have to do that analysis and be able to put stipulations in to these agreements, which would be a development agreement concurrent with zoning. We've done that in the past, I believe. Is that right, Mr. County Administrator? Or Artie, we've done development agreements concurrent with zoning at, from time to time?
It may have been done in the past. It's not something that's common.
Canopy road or canopy development? Was that concurrent?
Is that legal?
I think that may have been concurrent with the PUD, but not with the comp plan amendment.
Okay.
And those happen separately. These are happening concurrently, comp plan. So I'd have to look into statutorily what we'd be allowed to do, but there might be an opportunity to do that.
But we could have additional restrictions like a master plan or something like that placed on particularly large-scale urban service area expansions if they ever come up.
Right. Currently, the threshold for that is 200 acres, but that is, the policy.
We're all under that, all three of these are under that threshold, right?
They are.
Okay. Well, I'm struggling because based on our current policies, this is in line with them. And that's a problem, that it's in line with the current policies. And it's a problem that our county residents have to just go on trust that city, and it's no judgment, but counties trust in city to get it right. They won't have any control over what happens with that. This is why we have such challenges, in particular with these large-scale amendments. So my colleagues forgive me, I really did not mean to go on that long, but I got stuck on that point because the clarity and the language here, I mean, we've got residents who are, you know, April Road made, you know, this connection with Old St. Augustine made a big impact in April, the month of April. And that, that's a big issue. I wanna close out with this. A lot has been made of the population numbers and how many times we've expanded the urban service area in these discussions in the last few months. Commissioner Maddox, when you mentioned, no one could have predicted, in my opinion, due respect, we had a urban service area that was projected to accommodate our growth for a long time. To say, oh my God, we have grown 50% and we only expanded 2.4%, that's the way it should have been if we got the planning right in the first place. That's exactly it. We had urban service area that accommodated a lot of growth in the last 30 years, right? So yeah, we, we did plan for it. Now we're at that point where we gotta change our policies and reflect because we are bumping up against urban service area, right? And we got infill available, but it's challenging. Now is the time to do that policy discussion. And the next thing I'll say is, this is the one piece of, everything's been brought in that I think the next large scale, and when, you know, it may not be 200 acres on the USA, but getting close. When y'all use population numbers for the next one or the housing needs for the next one, I don't see how the numbers work. Because Artie said, and it's in the documents, but you said in March, we needed close to 23,000 homes. That was a projection in the next 40 years, or until 2040, right? Yeah. Well, between Walani, Bradfordville Hills and English, if they're at maximum, which they won't be, it's 24,000. We add these three, I, my guess is, we have hit that threshold for the projection of 2040. So I don't see there is any justification whatsoever for another large urban service amendment to come to us in, I mean, in the next few years. Do you think I'm wrong about that, Artie?
It's hard to predict when the next one will come.
Yeah, but population numbers are a critical piece of your justification from the Planning Department for bringing us urban service area expansion.
Right.
So based on those numbers and your justification of 23,000, you know, home sites needed, do you see that that would be a justification?
Unless something else changes, it would be difficult. There's always the chance that the PUDs for Walani come in and then we get more specific numbers for what's gonna happen there, more specific site plans for some of the other developments. And so we get more refined numbers, so we will know more at that point.
But there could be more than 4,000, there could be more than 4,000 within the USA existing.
Right.
That, you've got those numbers too. So I haven't included those.
Yes.
So things that have already been approved, things that are existing within the urban service area, in the urban area right now, we're probably, if these amendments pass, we're probably over 28,000.
We're probably very close, if not over.
Okay. Thank you. Thanks, Mr. Chair.
Hey, thank you very much, Commissioner Dozier. County Attorney, can you tell this board a little bit about, it's my sense that this matter is not ready to move forward tonight. What options do we have if there's other issues of concern that have not been met to the level of our satisfaction?
Chairman, comments were received from the state on May 14th. Under the statute, which is 163.3124, subsection 3C. If the second hearing is not held and the local government fails to pass the amendments, they are deemed to withdrawn within 180 days of receipt of those comments from the state, absent, an extension by agreement of, with the applicant and notice to the state and any affected person that provided comments on the amendment. I would say for clarification, affected person is defined in the statute. It is not anybody who provided a comment about any of these items. It includes the affected local government, persons owning property residing or owning or operating a business, then the boundaries of the local government whose plan is the subject of the review, owners of real property, abutting real property that is the subject of a proposed change to a future land amendment, and adjoining local governments that can demonstrate that the plan or plan amendment will produce substantial impacts. So that is a fairly limited number of people, just to be clear.
Very good. And that was as clear as mud. Thank you so much. That's great.
We did it for Walani.
So when you get in mud, you have to keep going.
Okay. Yes, ma'am.
Just to distill that, Madam Attorney, and I'm not necessarily suggesting this, but just to help the chairman out here, that 180 days is when it expires. So it could be extended for a short amount of time without having those comments from the state expire.
The deadline runs 180 days from May 14th.
From May 14th, right.
That's our downtime to distill it.
Okay.
Which is, puts you in mid-November.
That's about, I guess that's about six months or something. Well, tonight, I'm not prepared to support the measure, even on the front end, I, I thought that I was. But this is a public hearing. I've heard compelling arguments from the public. And I want to state pretty much what, what my hesitation is. And I think that if we can push this out a little bit, we can, we can do better. First of all, with respect to St. Augustine Road, it being a canopy, I'm very, very clear of my years serving local government, that canopy roads are untouchable. So there just can't be concurrency. And neither the county or city commission, neither of us have the heart or spines to do anything with canopy roads to expand their capacities. That will not happen in our lifetimes with St. Augustine. That will not happen to Meridian. That will not happen to Mika Sookie. That will not happen to Centerville Road. Mark my words. I'm hopeful that it can change on Bainbridge Road, that we could spine up and it could do something on Bainbridge. But we just do not touch the Holy Grail, canopy roads. So whatever we're talking about, that road is gonna be stuck for So, whatever we're talking about, that road is going to be stuck for the rest of our lives. There's no expectation. So, to Commissioner Dozier's point about trust, we just have to trust. What I can trust is that ain't nothing going to happen to a canopy road. I trust that. With respect to the death rate, uh, which we heard, and I don't know if that person's speaking about Lake Monson, I would just say that, uh, the Woodville area, uh, it's, is a sick area. Lake Monson itself is ill. Uh, our county has placed a, uh, do not let your pets get in the water, don't, you get in the water, don't eat anything out of the water, and, um, we, we have some issues. Uh, Lake Monson is ill. And when a lake like that is, uh, cross, just, just across, uh, which is off of Crawfordville, and it's that close to the new development that's, uh, suggested for, uh, Woodville Highway, those areas are much too close together. Uh, and I believe that if there is, uh, a cancer, uh, over there on, on, uh, Crawfordville, there's cancer over there on Woodville. Uh, the underground flow, even our city passes water through its pipes from, uh, over by the airport over to the spray field. Uh, not only is the city running water underneath the ground in spring and on top, but nature herself is likely passing water in various cars, uh, areas. I think that we have a problem down there, and we need to look holistically, not only topically at water, but we need to look at the underground water. And if it's all, um, skanked up, Lake Monson, you had best believe it's skanked up in that whole region south of Capital Circle. I am not a, uh, uh, what's that word called?
We're sorry.
Why y'all taking laxatives up here?
There's a, there's a, there's a whole lot of sloshing going on.
Man, y'all signing up for them. Then, of course, um, I need, um, I need, I need that 180 days because I need the Woodville community, the last thing I want to do is to learn that, um, the, uh, the applicant and the citizens have not convened the conversation. And for people who live down that road, uh, up, up the dump numbers of years and have not had, I, I don't want to betray what I feel they should be attuned to, uh, with what's going to be a major feature of change. And I do need a, I need a town hall meeting, uh, Woodville needs a town hall meeting and, uh, with that developer. Um, it's not clear, uh, from staff in terms of the building, uh, uh, inspection, and one of the speakers spoke to the quality of, uh, uh, the gentleman right there, the quality of, uh, uh, materials and this and that, and, uh, will it be affordable with, for, uh, utility and da-da-da. But I don't know if the county is going to be inspectors, I was talking about your comment, sir, if the county is going to be, um, in charge of inspections or with the city be in charge of. Now, typically, though we've had only 12, uh, so-called, uh, changes to the USA, I will always be appreciative to, um, the Mayor Pro Tim for his efforts with the CRA and how we have only so much CRA, uh, room, um, per, um, square mile. But his efforts to lead us to include, uh, South City, uh, was absolutely major. Commissioner Richardson, I also always value, uh, your push for that, but see, that CRA line, we only get so much space, so we had to negotiate and move, and you did a great job. I'm not sure that we're restricted with the USA line, that we only get so much line. So, you, you know, I, I don't think that it works that way. But what I have observed is that in times when we have not moved the USA line, the city has just point-blank went for annexation, uh, with or without, um, USA. And so, the trick around the USA, um, not that I know all the tricks, um, but one of the tools is you simply annex, and there you got it, bam. Um, so it's not all that impressive that we argue, uh, not argue, but deliberating over USA. It really don't mean nothing. City always has that power to, uh, annex when they get ready. So, kudos to the city for that power. This should not be, uh, an either-or, or all-or-nothing, and I disagree that these, uh, uh, these elements should not be tied together. Woodville should not be in no package with, uh, um, St. Augustine. That's just, that don't make sense. Uh, this is a total different kind of, and, 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 and I, I, I disapprove of staff's, uh, appointment of these three things tied together. I'm not going to vote like that. I don't want to vote like that. And the thing that concerns me the most, commissioners, is the fact that Walcolet Springs Protection Zone, of which we hold accountable, uh, a stricter standard to people, the 9,000 residents in that zone than any other place in the community. And, uh, to build out, uh, what's being proposed, to change from 1 in 10 acres, uh, hell, I've been trying to get it changed since Moses was a little boy. But when a big developer comes here and can suddenly and just willfully walk up and our staff caves and capitulates and makes recommendation, um, I'm just hardly, um, amazed. Commissioner's voice does not carry the weight in the South Side that some developer walking up to our staff, and our staff can suddenly see a light. There is no indication whether central sewer is going to come to that project, or if them people going to be forced, like the rest of them people, on a septic tank situation. And until the city makes clear and this developer, what's going to happen, uh, I'm not ready to support it because the area's sick. Monson is showing you it's, the area's sick. And the city's silence with respect to a role of what's going on in Monson is concerning. But yet, we push further to an injured area and to, uh, allow, uh, greater intensity and harm to happen in that area. We need to find out what we can do to cure, um, that area. I wish the city was not as silent as they are, uh, with respect to that part of town. And even if the city made an agreement, uh, with Horton to, um, put a big old promise and big old pink letters that they're going to sewer, you can count on it, we're not going to put in more affluent, uh, and trust septic, uh, systems to work. But then, I would have greater angst because that means the city would have just walked past a whole bunch of people been living there for 40 or 50 years who still don't have sewer. But it is the city's habit to run after big developments that are shiny and new and offer new meters for, um, the registering of, um, utility services. I get that. The city is a business, and what they're supposed to do, find business. But in ignoring, you know, to speak equity, and let's talk about parity, in ignoring those people who are already inside of the urban service area, if the city comes back and give these people some kind of agreement and arrangement, it would simply confirm what, speaking of trust, what I already trust, is that the USA, um, is not, uh, a statement of equality. The USA does not carry the same weight, uh, when people are black. It just don't have the same commitment. And, um, it's borne out, uh, across this community. We really should have that, that workshop on, on these things because the city's withheld services on Meridian Road, Centerville Road, over there on Monday Road, and all across the South Side, where people not annex, but annexation, I don't know if the USA is out there, but annexation has certainly occurred. And I just can't trust today, uh, the partners that are ours to work with because for too long, it's scathingly, uh, obvious that the USA... And my first question tonight, um, my first question tonight was to our staff, was simply, uh, uh, what, to somebody, Christian, that was three hours ago, uh, what, what does the USA mean?
Who's counting?
What, what does that mean? Who was it?
Who's counting?
I don't know.
It was three hours ago.
Yeah, it'd have been four. And I don't know what the USA mean, and I asked those people, what do you expect, yeah, the lawyer, what do you expect with the word USA? And his expectations generally speak to what the USA's commitment is, um, except that is my expectation too, but it's not fulfilled where black people live in the South Side. It's not fulfilled. So, the USA word is, um, loaded, uh, with inequality. Uh, it's, uh, racially not the same, and those are the facts, and that's what I'm trusting the facts. On the county's behalf, uh, is there a motion? Uh, I think that what we ought to tonight, commissioners on the county, we should table this thing. Uh, our county attorney says that there are 180 days, uh, that they're still in a good way of, uh, being on time to submit. Uh, I, I ask you, in the, in the interest of, um, the, the citizens of Woodville, uh, to meet with this developer, um, and have a conversation. Uh, secondly, uh, we need to know about the traffic concurrency, uh, which should not be a gonna do. We need to know. I think that we have a sick area. Uh, the water that we can see is sick, and I imagine that the water that we don't see in the same area is sick, but ain't nobody looked at it. And unfortunately, we have a cluster of three projects, uh, tied all as one, and they are not the same. So, with the questions that have been raised by Commissioner Dozier, Commissioner Minor, myself, and, uh, other commissioners, uh, the city's taken a vote, uh, but the city is not, is neither our mother nor our father, so we're not, um, we're not in any way compel, um, county commissioners to follow the city. Um, one acre in 10, we're about to change, if I heard staff correctly, to four and eight, uh, homes per 10 acres. One home we have now are 10 acres, and we're allowing for four to maybe eight, uh, homes in 10 acres. And I'm not excited, I'm not in awe of what, what environmental, uh, matters in that sensitive area, where when the water table's full, and staff walk with me if I'm, you know, get it wrong, that, um, when the water table's full in certain parts of the South, um, it's sandy, um, when the water table's full, uh, we can at times go down 10, 12 feet and, and get the water, is my understanding. Uh, if that's the case, that water is almost at the surface as is Lake Monson, and I need for it to be checked out before we add additional volume of, um, and nobody on this, in this, and to make sure that you're very clear, um, at this particular table, and probably in this city, community's history, no single commissioner has, as long as this one speaking has, baying for, implored this community for growth, for development, uh, in the South Side. Like Commissioner Williams-Cox said, we love the South Side. We good. We ain't trying to be nobody else, but we do want parity of services that we're paying like everybody else. That's what we want. But I feel comfortable in the skin that I'm in because my record is long, arduous, and clear, and I am for the development, but not on top of sick soil and unknowing where environmentally we're going to go. I don't want to ruin the South Side. And I think that we have, Tallahassee has every 100 adults, 46 have a college degree. That's a lot of smart people, and we don't have to injure the land if we don't have to. But we have those questions. So, I'd like to, um, can I make a motion? I'd like to pass the gavel to, um, Vice Chairman, and, uh, Ms. Vice Chairman, if you receive this, this gavel.
Motion made to postpone the item by the chairs, or second to the motion. Motion dies, oh, motion's been seconded by Commissioner Minor. Um, I believe we discussed this as much as you could possibly discuss it.
You do?
I do.
Do you need clarification?
Yes.
And forgive me, Mr. Chair, I'll just step out for a quick second. Some of the clarity that you are asking for, the transportation, and, and I share those concerns, as I said, um, it, it is my impression that, I mean, we could ask for those things to be done, but the Planning Department staff only does a high-level review during the comp plan cycle. Um, I'm not sure what additional detail...
Artie, could you answer that question, please?
Yeah.
It would be very difficult to, uh, to provide that level of detail as part of this. Honestly, that is the next step. That's the site plan review process, so without having a development plan, which we don't have any policy to require, it's hard for us to do those analyses.
So, how much of what Commissioner, you don't mind, how much of what Commissioner Proctor's asking for, we actually be able to bring back if we postpone the item?
I don't believe there was anything that was requested that we could bring back at this point.
So, we'll be getting the same information?
Yeah. Excuse me, I'm sorry.
We'll be getting the same information?
You would get the same information, that's correct.
Commissioner Dozier?
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chairman. I mean, that's, that's why I wanted to ask the question because, as I mentioned before, I share a lot of the same concerns, maybe all the same concerns, except for that 1 to 10, we'll leave that aside, um, that you have, Mr. Chair. But that's why I spend so much time saying, this is the process we have. I wish we could find out more about traffic, stormwater, who had other policies. I wish county residents could feel confident that if this goes through city growth management, a government that they're not voting for, that it's, that they're going to have some of these issues already taken care of, but, and again, it's not a judgment call, but this is just the process we have right now. So, as much as I want that information before taking a vote, I have to base it on the process that we have right now. And that's, that's the only thing that we can use to determine this decision. I think we need a policy change, but that doesn't change where we are with these three amendments, so.
Commissioner Dozier, I appreciate your comments. I think as Commissioner, um, as the chairman said earlier, to the, uh, county attorney, some of, of what we've been talking about to people who aren't reading this every day is probably as clear as mud. Um, I'm going to, I'm going to try to clarify or simplify it a little bit, un-muddy the water. Um, what we're talking about here is the fact that, once we make this comp plan amendment, uh, the county will have no say in that, uh, development plan that will come forth that would, that would specify a lot of the things that Commissioner Proctor's asking about. So, right here at this table today is the only time that we get an opportunity to see what that actually looks like. So, we're talking about, we, your word, trust keeps coming up, and how, how we're going to have to trust. And what Commissioner Proctor has said is that, um, in the past, you correct me, Commissioner Proctor, if I'm saying this is wrong, um, he's tried to trust the city on multiple occasions to do something in a certain way that's going to be advantageous to his district when it comes to protecting his groundwater, and, without putting too many words in his mouth, he just doesn't have the faith and he would like to have some certainty right now as to, as to the answer to some of those questions before he gives up his ability to have a say on some of those questions. Uh, I think that's fair, Commissioner Proctor. Uh, Mr. Chairman, I think it's very fair. Commissioner Dozier's same thing. I think you were, you were basically saying the same thing, you're just not district commissioner, commissioner, and I think it's fair for you to say as well. I think it's fair for any of us county commissioners to say. But we both, as, as Commissioner Dozier said, it's a policy issue. It's something that we should really dig, dig deep in, into, not today, but when we have a different policy conversation around the fact that the county's about to make a decision, uh, that once we make that decision, even though these, um, lands will be, or this land will be, um... will be, um, within Leon County, we won't get to have a say on the, the, the development plan is going to, uh, be gone before the city. But how do I, Commissioner, give me, give me one, I, I think, I'm trying to, um, when I sit here, I'm trying to figure out how I feel exactly about that lack of trust. I, I understand why Commissioner, Commissioner Chairman Proctor feels the way he does. I would imagine that the city and its staff does the very best it can to protect its constituents just like we do. And I, I want to be able to trust that some of the same concerns you have about that groundwater, Commissioner Proctor, they would have and hear your concerns here today. And even if they didn't see it before, we see it now. Um, I want to trust that our city commissioners and city staff can be as thoughtful as we are, especially after you articulated. But I do understand why you feel the way you feel because you said it yourself. How many years have you been asking for, um, sewer in septic, uh, I'm sorry, sewer deceptive in those areas in the city just is, is falling, if you felt like it's falling on deaf ears to the city. So I, I mean, I can't, I can't argue with you. And even you've been afar longer than I have and probably asking for it since, like you said, Moses was a little boy and I wouldn't even thought about. So I understand where you're coming from. But this, this is, as Commissioner Dozier said, it's quite a pickle, man. I mean, it's, it's really a pickle because we, we, we only have the opera, all we have to operate is within is the policy and that we have, and that's the policy that we have now. Um, so, so Commissioner, Commissioner Dozier, I think you're right. Maybe it's a policy discussion later on, but it's not today. So we are where we are. Um, the, the, the staff has said that unfortunately, though the questions you ask are very good, and we love for that clarity to come back, that clarity won't come, that clarity won't come back unless there's, until there's a development plan, that development plan won't happen unless we approve the amendment, uh, which, which makes way for some of the things that we have, uh, that, that we're looking at doing with affordable housing and things of that nature. So, um, I applaud the effort and I, I do agree with a lot of what you said, Commissioner Dozier. I think it's a policy issue that we should take up and we should think strongly about how we, how we go about it, but that's where we are.
One of the things that I like about Governor DeSantis, uh, he drew a map and the state's constitution clearly gives him no authority to do such. And in his own mind, his effort to do right, which is his idea of right, uh, he didn't allow the state's constitution to prohibit or to inhibit what he thought was right. My idea tonight is about what I believe is right and not sure if it fits or if it violates existing policy matters. But when you believe that you're right, um, and you see that a policy will allow an egregious, irreversible act to occur, something that you cannot recover from if you allow this to happen, those are the bases of which, uh, injunctions are, are granted when irreparable harm could flow. And I can see that, um, in the course of, um, St. Augustine Road, um, is not going to be wide. Uh, but someone said they walked, they used to run, jog, irreparable harm. Woodville, the same thing, irreparable harm will flow. And I, I believe that we have the chance to hit the brakes. I believe we have the chance to allow, um, citizens of Woodville to, um, talk with, I'm the district commissioner. I've not talked to Horton. Uh, nobody's called me, uh, anything. But in our community, you don't have to talk to a commissioner, not even a district commissioner, just go to staff and you're chummy and you get it done that way. And then staff knows the rules better than we know and they know that we're hamstrung and can't do nothing. They already know that. We're getting played. We're the ball in a pinball machine getting pumped around. So I recognize this and you recognize it. I'm simply not willing to be, um, silent, uh, to it. We have the opportunity to stand up and protect Walcolet Springs, um, protection zone, whatever it is. Uh, it's just so sad, speaking of trust, that the areas and the people dying and the highest death rate, look in J. Gate apart, look at cancer, look at Lake Munsen, look at those areas and the people, uh, Commissioner Maddox, Ms. Vice Chair, you're really clear. Uh, the people who don't have sewer are the people who live closest to the sewer treatment plant. They just can't get in. And that is amazing to me and the city is very comfortable allowing that. And, um, you want me to trust something which visibly can't do that. So I want, and I'm asking this board to, um, allow for the citizens of Woodville because let's be clear, um, this is, it's not a racial gentrification, but I would argue that to the people of Woodville and in that area, it could be an economic gentrification, uh, meaning the people who've lived there for decades may well feel, um, a swing of, um, upswing of, um, of property values and whatnot is going up. So it'd be a certain economic gentrification if I could borrow and substitute meanings. So those are my comments. My motion is on the table and I thank you, Mr. Chairman.
We're going to end with, uh, Commissioner Cummings and then we'll go to Hugel.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. I just have, um, I guess a question, a request, clarification.
Yes, ma'am.
I'm certainly sensitive to the issues raised by Commissioner Dozier as it relates to April Road and St. Augustine Road and clearly sensitive to, uh, the issues raised by, um, Chair, uh, Chair Proctor. Uh, but my, my question is, uh, Commissioner Proctor raised concern about April Road and Woodville Highway and, and Southwood all being raised, uh, under one amendment. And I'm not sure, and perhaps maybe staff can answer this, if this vote is postponed, is it a situation where those could be bifurcated, separated and each one brought back as a separate amendment based on their, their particular location and impact as towards the urban service area is concerned on each one of those locations?
The different sites could be broken apart. They were bundled together because it was one applicant amending one map and we use the same evaluation criteria across all, uh, all the amendments. So whatever would have applied to one would have applied to the other two as well. So that's why they were bundled together is this, we evaluate them against the same policies.
So can I fault, so the impacts and, and issues raised by Commissioner Proctor wouldn't even be addressed is what you're saying if you brought them back separately anyway?
So the, the urban service area, they were bundled together, but the actual changing the land use designation and the zoning on the future land use map, those are broken out separately and those would be the next three, uh, amendments following this one. And so that is broken out because that's when we look at impacts of the specific amendments. This is for the urban service area. And so it was one set of policies that applied to all of them.
We're being insulted. We're really being insulted to allow that to be an argument or rationale. Our staff should bring back, uh, independent, independently evaluated, uh, measures. These are different properties, same player. And we're being played and this, it disrespects, uh, the integrity of what we owe to each individual geographic locale. To lump them together is just plain urban planning negligence. And I'm disappointed. And I believe if this commissioner is able to get a continuation within that 180 great, 180 day window, I'm asking our staff to show this board, uh, more intellectual, um, respect. And for me to be put in this position, Mr. Vice Chairman, like all of this is all or nothing. I said here, this is, we're being treated like this all or nothing or either or. It ought be individual. And I'm really inflamed. I'm insulted and Vince, don't ever let no, come to this table like this again. You, Vince, your job is to make sure that my county commission is respected. This should never come to us ever again. And I'm asking you, I'm telling you, don't let this happen, Vince. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Chair, with respect.
Don't, don't play with me tonight.
No, I'm not going to.
Commissioner Proctor, let's speak.
We, we've got a lot of big issues here, but I do want to say that we've been sitting at this table together for a long time. And there have been some of us asking for a deep dive on these issues. Nancy Miller and I did it for a few years. It brought up the, you know, change in the land use element and we're still waiting on a contractor to do that element many, many years later. We have been talking about these things and trying to address these things for a really long time. This is not our county administrator's issue. This is not our city manager's issue. This is city and county commissioners and the mayor who make these decisions. And we need to take up that policy decision. That's it, Mr. Vice Chair.
Mr. Chairman, hold on. The presentation of these items is like, is like, you don't co-mingle.
I get it. Commissioner Chairman, can I, can I, can I?
So I don't know what Dozier talking to, but these matters have been co-mingled and I'm asking for the singularity of these individual measures to come to this board that we can respectfully deal with each independent of the other. That's what I'm asking.
Mr. Chairman, I, I appreciate where you're coming from, but what I, what I think, the point that, that we're missing here, uh, and I think.
I've not missed a point, bro.
No, you missing the point. Because even if it, even if it's broken apart, the questions that you're asking can't be answered because there's no development plan.
Yeah.
So, so, so they can break it apart all they want to. At this point in the process with policy, there's no development plan, so they can't answer any of those questions, which Commissioner Dozier is speaking to when she's saying there need to be a policy, we need to look at the policy part of it to get those answers, those questions answered at this point before we make these kind of decisions. So I mean.
I don't think Wendy Gray would say that at all.
Staff is only working within the policy that we have set and has been set forever. So, 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 so to, to Vince and to staff, you guys are only doing what you can do per policy. That's all you're doing. That's, that's what they're doing. They're doing, they're going by the policy, they're going by the policy that we have set. They can't do anything else.
We have never set that they have to bring it back bundled together. That's not nothing we've set.
Mr. Chairman, if I could just weigh in briefly, what I'm hearing, if the county does desire a delay, it could be brought back, separated, um, and taken a vote individually. I've also heard a desire, um, for a town hall for more community input. Um, the city's already taken a vote, so I'm just weighing in here. I've also heard a lot of concerns about what the city would have to do independently, um, to garner your support. And I will commit to bring those questions to a city commission meeting if this gets delayed. So in advance of you making a decision on the final item, some of those conversations, um, could be had.
I don't even know who these people are and I'm the chairman of county government.
Motion's on the floor. Yeah, Mr. Chair, you, you made the motion, so you can't leave. Motion's on the floor is for a delay made by the chairman, seconded by Commissioner Minor. All those in favor of the motion on the floor, can I say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Those.
Aye. What motion? My motion?
Yes, your motion.
Aye, yeah.
The postpone, yes. Um, Commissioner Welch, are you still there?
Yeah, yes, I do not support that motion.
You going to support the motion or not?
Not.
He does not. All right. So, uh, let's see, you got three, three? Motion fails. Commissioner Dozier, you again supporting?
No, sir, I, I knew this was going to happen at some point tonight. We have a three, three commission now. So we're kind of stuck.
Unfortunate.
Um, it really is. So, um, we did not have an original motion on the table, did we? Okay.
Can, can I, can I, Commissioner, um, I'm sorry. I just want to speak to Commissioner Matlow. I appreciate you stepping in there and saying you would bring Commissioner Proctor's questions to the city. Um, and Commissioner Proctor, I think if anything, you can find some kind of comfort in desert city commissioner, at least one that will bring some of your cer, your concerns there and, and be willing to have that conversation. Um, but, so I, I do appreciate you stepping in and making that commitment there.
Mr. Vice Chairman.
Yes.
I, I would suggest first that we ascertain whether or not those conversations have been had by the city. You know, we, I have sat here and respected your process, didn't, because I didn't think it was appropriate.
Agreed.
Be a part of that.
What y'all, what y'all talking about? Y'all tell me what y'all talking about. I don't understand.
That the city has, has ignored these issues.
No, sir.
They've never, they've never been brought to me.
And let me be clear, um, I, Commissioner Matlow, I, what I was saying was we have to trust the future process at the city. And there, I mean, there's nothing the city has ignored at this point because we don't have a site plan, because they haven't gotten a comp plan applicant, a comp plan amendment yet. So no, I'm not saying that there is anything that the city could or would bring us at this point. You couldn't do that at this point. I'm saying our process, it is a stepping stone. So yeah, that's, um, the city has not ignored these questions. It has not hit your desk yet. I'm saying our county residents, this is a problem with lots of comp plan amendments that come up because, particularly the big ones, because we are told on so many issues, oh, we can't tell you that yet, that comes next in the site plan process.
That, but Commissioner Dozier, that is totally different from the city sitting there silent.
Oh, but Commissioner Richardson, Mayor Protem, I did not say that.
No, I know.
One of your own board members said that. I want to be clear, there's some anger going around here and we need to dial the temperature down. We're all having a very constructive conversation. We still need a county motion so we can get to the rest of our agenda here. I'm not thrilled with this. I don't want to make this motion to impact my neighbors out in District Five without having those answers to question, but I can.
They're my neighbors as well.
Yes, sir, they are.
This community.
If I, if I, if I had a gavel, I would use it right now.
Right.
Listen, listen, whoa, time out, time out, time out, time out. Commissioner Dozier, Commissioner, give me a second, give me a second. I can, I can understand. I get it, I get it. But I, I want to, I want to bring some kind of, just, just give me a second. I can understand Commissioner Richardson, Mr. Mayor Protem, why are you a little bit steamed right now? Because it looks like it's though the city doesn't care about what's happening with those constituents on the South Side, per, per the conversation that was had. So I, I can understand that, but I think we're getting so far off of the fact that even if you, even if you wanted to have the conversation, the problem is not the conversation. The problem is the policy. And that's what Commissioner Dozier keeps saying, which I totally agree with. Is that there's no policy that says that, the policy right now says you can't even have the conversation until, after we make this approval and then you get a development plan and then you can have the conversation. And that is what she's saying, which I, which I kind of agree with. Now, Commissioner Proctor, now, now his, now his bringing up the point of all those houses that are in front of this proper, or, or, that's already in the urban services area that's not getting sewer, not, now, let's, let's be honest, this Commissioner Chairman Proctor has had that gripe with the city for absolutely ever, at least, at least ever since I've been on the board. This ain't nothing new. This, y'all hearing this from him is not anything new. Now, the, the, the point that, that his thing is, okay, this new property is something that I'm not willing to entertain because of what's been done in the past, I do get why we're roughing your fellows a little bit. I said myself, I think you guys, when you make those decisions, will look at this thing and bring up some of the same issues that he's brought up. But when I said to Commissioner Matlow, I appreciate him saying that, what I'm saying is that, okay, whenever that, that, that development plan comes, comes back, he's heard Commissioner Proctor, he's going to bring those things up. But I think he's the only person who's going to be concerned about it? No. I would expect the two people who are the, who are the biggest champions on the South Side will be, going to be, uh, concerned about the same thing when it comes to the groundwater, right? So, so you go ask the same questions he going to ask. He just brought it up. So I, I have no problem thinking in this moment that the city will consider the things that Commissioner Proctor has asked for consideration if this thing passes and the development plan comes before you. At the same time, again, I'll say it for like the sixth time, I think Commissioner Dozier has a point in, we wouldn't even, this, this conversation wouldn't have gone so long if we would look at the policy piece of it. And we've been talking about policy here that we can't even address in this meeting. Three hours on policy that we can't even address here. So what we should be doing is addressing what's on the table today. And then if each respective commission wants to have this policy discussion, then we have the joint meeting that Commissioner Dozier talked about a few minutes, well, probably about an hour and a half ago. And we talk about the policy piece of it and then we can just move on. Let's address what's on the table today. And I'm sorry to the commi, city commissioners, if you felt insulted by some of the comments of Commissioner Proctor, but who, who, I'm not surprised. I'm, I'm sure none of my colleagues is surprised because he said it before a million times. And if you watched our meetings, you shouldn't be surprised either.
I don't watch your meetings. I don't watch your meeting.
I get it, I get it.
And he's never said it to me.
I get it.
And I've been on that city commission for almost 10 years now, Commissioner Maddox.
Commissioner Richardson, I'm just saying, don't be surprised, I'm sorry. All right? I'm sorry, don't be surprised. Commissioner Dozier, make a motion so we can get out of here.
With reluctance, I'm going to make a motion. Which option are we on? For staff recommendation? Is that sufficient?
Option number five.
Option five, thank you. It's been a long time coming. And with that, if I could add additional comments, I'm saying this just to sum up these three hours. We have major problems, Southwood Plantation, April Road, and many of these other areas. They need to be addressed. Today is not the day to do it, and that is unfortunate. So I'm making a motion, but I very much hope in the future, the city will reflect on those issues and the developer will as well. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
I'm just being moved by Commissioner Dozier, seconded to the motion.
Well, I don't second it.
I know. Is there a second to the motion?
I'll second.
Okay. I'm just possibly moved by Commissioner Dozier, seconded by Commissioner Welch. All those in favor, you can say aye.
Aye.
Post?
Aye.
Motion passes four to two. Next item?
The next item, commissioners, is the Woodville Highway Amendment. This one's a little complicated in that a portion of it is within the city limits, a portion of it is in unincorporated Leon County, and the portion that's in Leon County requires a concurrent rezoning as well. So I'll kind of walk through that. The request is to take it from planned development, that's within the city portion, to suburban. Those land use categories have the same level of intensity and density. In fact, the planned development was based on the suburban land use category. The portion in the county is rural, and the request is to take it to suburban. The ordinance for the city is ordinance number 22-0-10, an ordinance of the City of Tallahassee adopting a large scale map amendment to the 2030 Tallahassee-Leyton County Conference Plan to change the future land use map designation from the planned development land use category to the suburban land use category at Woodville Highway and Capitol Circle Southeast, providing for severability and conflicts and providing an effective date. As I mentioned, the county portion would also require a rezoning. The city portion is already R3, so it has the requested zoning on it, so only the county has a concurrent rezoning. This is a map of it showing the R3 on the city portion, and then the portion that is being requested for the concurrent rezoning. I'll just kind of quickly go over this. This is the acreage. R3 allows eight units per acre. We do know of an archaeological site that will be delineated at the natural features inventory of the site plan, but it is something that we found as part of our preliminary analysis. If approved, the development would require central sewer, and more information is included in Attachment 20, which is the staff report. So the local planning agency recommended approval of this. That would be option seven for the county for the map amendment, option eight for the county for the rezoning, and then option nine for the city for just a map amendment because no rezoning is needed. And as far as speakers, we have Gary Hunter and Sean Marston on this.
Okay. Speakers, if you would, please come forward. State your name and addresses for our record.
Gary Hunter, here with Holzman Bogga on behalf of the applicant. You all know the issue before you. I'm happy to answer any questions, otherwise no sense of prolonging this further than the conversation that we've already had for the last three hours. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have, but you're familiar with the amendment we're asking for, so.
County commissioners, is there any questions that you have for Mr. Hunter? There are none, Mr. Hunter, thank you.
Sean Marston, similar to Mr. Hunter, I'm here to answer any questions on the next two as well, so, thank you.
County commissioners, are there any questions for Ms. Marston? There are none. Board, you, we have option seven before us, is that, is that right? Seven and eight, or just seven?
Seven and eight.
Move option seven and eight.
All right. We, we have a motion. Okay, we have a motion from Vice Chair.
Mr. Chair, I'm sorry, this is why my motion until we hear all the speakers. I thought we didn't have any speakers. We have more speakers.
Okay, very good. We have a motion from the Vice Chair, seconded by Commissioner Dozier.
Mr. Chair, I'm going to rescind my motion until we hear the rest of the speakers.
Oh, okay, sorry about that. What you drinking, man? I mean, I couldn't make out what you were saying. All right, all right, who are our speakers? No, I'm, no, I'm dry. My cup is, you know.
You need a drink.
No, my cup is dry. All right, our speakers.
Jeff Blair previously indicated that he only wanted to speak on all the amendments as part of the urban service area, but he's indicated that he would like to speak on this amendment as well. He is connected via Zoom.
All right, are you able to hear me?
Yes, we can hear you well.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm sorry, but I'm going to be, I'm a little bit agitated, so you'll forgive me after listening to this conversation. I have to, I mostly agree with you, I have to say. One of the biggest roadblocks to participatory democracies is the perception that everyday Americans cannot influence government policy, and only the privileged and special interest can command the levers of power or change bureaucracies. Unless our local government leadership commits to meaningful community engagement, the city and county will thereby turn this perception into a reality. The city and county should immediately halt the unnecessary fast track to the policy decisions benefiting the privileged and special interest until it commits to and can provide for true public participation. We are looking for leaders who will put the interest and needs of our community ahead of the desires of special interest. Commissioners, you have been talking about affordable housing, equity for the South Side, and benefits to our community. These amendments contribute to none of these goals. Upon objective analysis, these amendments hinder our ability to more fairly invest our public funds in private investment in creating a vibrant and livable downtown urban core in South Side, where I happen to live as well, with a range of job opportunities for small local business entrepreneurs and local minority businesses because our tax dollars will pay for the true cost of these developments. Expanding the USA to three areas far from downtown will require the use of cars contributing to stall in traffic and will not contribute to affordable housing or equity for the South Side. Two of the three areas are near the National Cemetery and nowhere near the South Side. Even the parcel south of Capitol Circle on Woodville Highway is not connected in any meaningful way to the South Side. We need to comply with the legal requirements of the comp plan that requires and encourages urban infill and not rural and suburban sprawl by adding 458 acres to the urban service area. In addition, these amendments reduce our ability to provide economic incentives, training, developing services needed to help a variety of small locally owned businesses succeed in the downtown area and in the realization of our urban core in South and West Sides of our city and county. We do need a mix of housing options on the South Side, but these projects will in no way provide this. These amendments discourage people living in the urban core by divesting resources that could be used to encourage a variety of residential opportunities that are attractive and affordable to those wishing to walk to work, to shop, and to recreate downtown. It is not forward looking, nor does it acknowledge that trends are changing, younger demographics want to live in vibrant downtown with diverse residential options where they can walk or use public transportation to get to work, shop, and recreate. Finally, these amendments do not acknowledge that our population demographics in Tallahassee-Leyton County are aging, and if we want to keep our children and grandchildren here, we need a vibrant downtown, a revitalized urban core in South Side. These amendments are not justified when evaluated against all of the key metrics as I described earlier. They do nothing to bring equity or enhance the quality of life on the South Side. Thank you.
Thank you very much, sir. Is there another speaker?
There are no other speakers.
Okay. Commissioner Maddox, you had made a motion.
Yep.
All right. Commissioners, are there comments on the motion that's been made? I would just simply say that this motion, option, both of them, gives evidence and further mistrust of the comments made in the previous one. And this item goes further to show that while you say there is no information, we're lacking information, this becomes more specific. This is counter to staff being totally blank, totally blah. This suggests that staff is in lockstep and know exactly where they're leading this board. And to see it being the subsequent measure that we take up after our staff has said we can't know, we don't know, we don't have a clue, we don't have a periscope to see the future, blah, 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 here's the future right here. Thank you very much for those comments. It's right here. They know more than they tell us, in my opinion. All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Wait, Chair Proctor, there's no second.
Oh, okay. He withdrew the motion, I'm sorry. He withdrew the motion, I'm sorry. Were you reasserting the motion?
Yes, sir.
But we need a second.
I will second that before we go forward.
Very good. Commissioner Dozier, second and for comment.
I don't want to belabor this too much, but I do, I respect the hard work of Mr. Blair, and I want to say that there is a theme where we talk about a lot of these issues, and he's not wrong. People don't see them reflected in the big policy actions that we take. Now, we all know we've taken, we've taken some action on affordable housing, we've taken some action on some other things, but there is a disconnect. He is, he's right about that, in my opinion. And I'm not going to keep repeating this, but I think it bears repeating one more time. In our comment time tonight at the commission meeting, because I didn't say it like this before, I will bring up, I'll make a motion to have a workshop to think about these policies and the discussion we had at this meeting and at our transmittal hearing, because we do have that disconnect, and we need to have a separate time to dig into those issues. Again, we are just reflecting on the policies in front of us right now, and that's, in my opinion, how we have to make this decision. But I hope our city partners will do the same at your next opportunity to join us in doing a workshop should that motion pass. Thank you.
Any other commissioners?
Mr. Chairman, real quick.
Mr. Minor.
I just want to kind of state my agreement with Commissioner Dozier on a workshop in the future to take a look at the process, and take a look at what other local governments around the country have done to try to address that flaw, or that inherent flaw that we have that does not fully engage our citizens or give us the information that we could benefit from if we were able to at least get some semblance of those questions that we need answered. So when that workshop is moved, I will second that and enthusiastically approve it. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Option seven, commissioners require us tonight to adopt.
Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry. Can Scott speak to what citizen engagement process is, please?
The citizen engagement process for the comp plan cycle?
Yes.
Absolutely, Commissioner. So we accept applications from anyone who wants to submit an application between August and September of every year. At the end of September, we close the cycle, we evaluate the applications to make sure that all the pieces are there. Once we have all the pieces and confirm that, we do preliminary analysis. We then do a website that has the information, the application online available to the public, and we create a portal for citizens to start providing comments to us. Those are the comments that are in the attachments that you have in your agenda materials. Those run through when we make the agenda live, because at that point, we kind of cut it off because we put it in there, and we encourage people to attend in person and provide their comments if they haven't done it by the time the agenda materials are live. We, after we've started doing our preliminary analysis, we do a public open house, send out notices for that, put the information online. That's an opportunity for people to hear what amendments are proposed, as well as to start providing input that we use in our analysis of they're aware of something that we might not be aware of, that gets incorporated to the analysis. If they have questions, we answer them. Then it goes into the local planning agency stage. There's a workshop and then a public hearing, and just like tonight at the local planning agency public hearing, citizens have the time to speak, and then ultimately, the decision on what to recommend to the city and county come from the local planning agency. We then move into the joint city-county process where there's a workshop, and then there's the transmittal public hearing. So again, citizens have the opportunity to speak, and then it goes into the adoption hearings, so like tonight, we have that. All along the way, staff is available to answer questions. We provide our contact information. We put the name of the staff person on the staff report on the website, so people know directly who to reach out to if they have questions, and we're always happy to engage. We often have citizens come in asking specific questions. We're always open to that. Other people prefer the public hearing process, or some do both. And so that's really quickly kind of a recap of the public process. There's notifications as required, and mailed notifications and advertisements from the Democrat and the Capitol Outlook as well, but I can get to that if you.
I appreciate it. What I didn't want, because I've heard public engagement, about four or five times, you know, what I didn't want is the perception that there's not a pretty stout public engagement process that goes along through this. Now, if we want to do more, we can do more, but to say that the public is not engaged, I think is, is a bit unfair. I've heard so many different points that already said that, that constituents were asked to come, constituents could speak, constituents were notified. Maybe we could do more. If we'd like to do more, that's fine, but just, I just want to make sure people have an opportunity that we know, that the public at large knows that we're not making these decisions without any discussion or any, any thought from our constituents. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Vice Chair, are you saying that the civic IQ of the Woodville area would be equal in the same of the civic IQ of, say, those persons who came out with the Walani processes? What are you saying?
But what I am saying is that I believe our staff, the civic IQ of the constituent is relative, yes, but I believe if that constituent with a lesser of a civic IQ than the other asks our staff a question, our staff will try their best to break that situation down to where even my son can understand it. And so now, when you talk about the ability to show up and actually have a civic, so okay, so they reached out to us, so we need to come, that may be a bit different, but those who come, I think staff does their very best to put it in a way that every constituent understands it. So from that standpoint, that's what I mean there. Now, those who, those who come get that benefit. Those who don't come, they don't get it. And I agree, some people that may, in Woodville, may not know how important it is for them to show up. They may not know that. But if they, if they don't know, I think it's on us as leaders to explain to them, and even staff to a certain extent, to explain to them how important it is and the information that will be shared and the way broken down, because their voice is the most important thing in our decision-making process besides the information that we receive. So I agree with you on that piece of it, but I do think those who do come, they get a staff that breaks it down in a way that they can understand it.
Is anybody in here from Woodville? Thank you. Ms. Minor.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and just want to clarify, Commissioner Maddox, I'll give you that, the citizen engagement process that we have at the county blueprint, the joint comp plan, I mean, is pretty extensive. I mean, if you read the project documentation, the citizen engagement sections are very comprehensive. My point is that still, that the public often doesn't become aware of some of these major projects until we've already gone through one step, two step. Even this, this series of proposals right now, we got, at least I, got very few comments leading up to transmittal. The vast majority of comments we got from the public were after transmittal leading up to this meeting right here. So I know that our staff does a good job reaching, communicating with the citizens that engage them, but it's worth us having to take a look at, because I hear it all the time. You know, when did this issue come about? It's been around for, you know, we just learned about this now. And part of that is just the fact that this is just how some of the process works, but there may be opportunities for us to explore ways to improve it so that we can, we get more of our public comments coming earlier in the process as opposed to later. That's my main comment, I just want to clarify that. Commissioner Maddox is saying is that, you know, we do have an extensive citizen engagement process. For the folks that reach out to us, I think that staff does a really good job of connecting with them and explaining the projects and the details of the projects. I've sat in on a lot of those citizen meetings. I've sat in on, on a lot of those citizen meetings. But again, a lot of that doesn't come until after we've gone through a couple steps already. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right, thank you, Commissioner Mayor. Any other commissioners? Commissioner Dozier?
I was going to say the C N, but, um, the, this notice requirement has come up a few times. At our transmittal hearing and, and prior to that, I made a comment about, um, desire to expand our notice for, uh, large-scale amendments, um, more than a thousand feet. And, um, we couldn't make a motion at that time. I brought it up, we passed it, I believe unanimously at the county side. I'm just wondering if that has been brought up. I believe the mayor said he would bring it up at the city side. So y'all have had a motion as well?
Yes.
And did it pass?
Yes, we did fifteen hundred feet. Or, I'm sorry, it, we did pass the.
You already set a limit, Ms. County? Okay. I can ask county administrator for a report back and from the city manager, but I thought we were expecting an agenda item to reflect on, um, options for this because the city and county would have to work together on this, is that correct?
We're still bringing you an item based on that, Director.
Thank you, thank you, sir.
Now, you're talking specifically about the comp plan amendments and the.
I'm talking about comp plan amendments and large comp.
Oh, ours is.
No, I'm talking about comp plan amendments, this discussion here. So I, so there has been a motion at the city commission?
No, no.
There is not, okay. Well, um, we have made a motion on our side and I believe the mayor did say he would bring it up on your side, um, so we're expecting an agenda item to come back, but I think we do need to expand the notice requirements for, um, any kind of amendment that is over a certain threshold. So we just left it up to our staff to bring us back options and working with the city manager. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, commissioners, no doubt that option seven, uh, goes well beyond, uh, what the previous measure, uh, that was in front of us. And again, that our staff, uh, played possum, uh, and didn't know what was going on. But tonight, this vote, it actually, uh, we're adopting a large-scale amendment, Woodville Highway, to the Tallahassee Leon County 2030 Comprehensive Plan. We are adopting something which has not afforded Woodville's citizens. And if a thousand feet is the, uh, breadth of, um, reaching out, uh, that probably some robins, some red birds, some, um, raccoons and squirrels, not that many people, uh, Woodville Highway stretch, uh, for a thousand feet. So again, we are, are moving and we are changing the comp plan with option seven, and we have not given consideration. And as you look, um, at option eight, it gives and affords, uh, this, this, this change of, um, this map, uh, the options of, um, intensifying, uh, a sick piece of dirt, has not had examination, all the things I listed previously. And, um, I'm well disappointed and I feel, um, tonight that we're, um, the process bamboozles, um, and it, it, it disallows, uh, independent thought of these properties, uh, and more so, the public has been boxed out. And they are going to get a change of their comprehensive plan, 2030 Comprehensive Plan, is going to go by just like that, and they really have had no notice. Thank you, uh, commissioners. All in favor of option seven, please say aye.
Aye.
No, it's one. Seven and eight? Seven and eight together? Those in favor of, um, seven and eight, uh, motion by Vice Chair, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, aye. It, it passes, um, again, uh, four-two. Okay, city?
Okay.
So ours is, uh, option nine, and I, I would say also, um, that the local planning agency is made up of citizens from our community who regularly interact, uh, with their neighbors, uh, and, and that's an opportunity. They make recommendations based on information that they receive as well.
You got in it at living Woodville on that, on that plan?
We are on option nine. Is, is there, there's a motion by Commissioner Williams-Cox? On? Is there a second?
Second.
There's a second by the mayor. Are there questions, comments, Commissioner?
Ms. Mayor, please.
Williams-Cox, Commissioner Williams-Cox.
I have served on the planning commission. I want to say to, um, staff that, um, I don't mind if the manager or me will stick here and say that I know and understand all that. I was, as a, as a member, as a citizen, and I want to thank Commissioner Proctor for, um, getting me appointed by the county commission to serve in that capacity. It was I opened, but as a citizen.
Commissioner, can you turn on your mic, please?
Break it up. It's been, it's been, I was trying to preserve it because we've been here so long.
You might want to repeat that Commissioner Proctor part over start right there.
Oh, okay.
I'm just teasing, go ahead.
Having served on the planning commission, I don't pretend or, or even try to pretend that I knew all of what staff was doing because they were the professionals, but I did serve as a county's appointee, um, thanks to Commissioner Proctor and the county commission for sending me there. So you're right, citizens do serve on, on that, uh, on the planning commission. I want to say this though, as well, here's an opportunity, uh, suggestion. Because county commissioners, most of you serve districts, you have an opportunity to take this information to your residents in your district to make sure that you, you're engaging with them as well. So I'm hoping that you're doing it. As city commissioners, we, we do this, although we don't have districts, we have to do the whole city. We put the call out to whoever come, we, we talk to them. I know Commissioner Porter, you used to do your weekly, weekly meetings, and I know, Commissioner Richardson, you've gone, I see you in the community at a lot of different, um, events, uh, same with Commissioner Malo. I'm just suggesting that if you don't think that staff is doing enough, then perhaps as commissioners, you might want to, um, do some, some of that engagement yourself to make sure that you're hearing from residents before it gets this far. I just want to make that suggestion. And I also want to say that I've sat here feeling like a child listening to the parents argue, um, and not wanting to get in and say anything because we, we made our vote and we're, we're sitting quietly by. But I do feel, and I have to say this, and I don't disrespect any of you, any of my colleagues here, but I do feel that those, we've been invited over to the courthouse as city commissioners, and we've been insulted by saying that we're not doing this and we should be doing this and we ain't doing this, but without an opportunity to share what is being done, what has been done, because we too have professional staff that, uh, deals with water quality, deals with, um, sewage, deals with, um, underground utilities, deal with a lot of the issues that we've heard discussed tonight. And I think that it was, it's just unfair to say things that we've not had an opportunity to talk about how we may have addressed them. Just because you may not have been privy to the conversation doesn't mean there has not been a conversation. Um, and I, I just wanted to, to say that because I don't want folks who are watching to think that, well, you know, that city commission, they ain't doing nothing. That's not the case. We're, we're doing an awful lot. And keep in mind, as city commissioners, we are part-time, um, employees or commissioners, let me do the air quotes, but we all work this thing full-time. So we are doing, as commissioners and staff, we are, we're working with our staff to make sure that residents' concerns are being addressed. And so I would, I would like to have a conversation or have staff brief someone on what we are doing. We're not sitting idly by while people are dying. I've not heard that until tonight, that that's what's going on. So give us an opportunity to talk about what we're doing, and if we need to do more, then we can do more if, you know, whatever, whatever it is. I just feel that I've walked into Alliance Den and I've been accused of something, and I'm, and I'm sitting here like, "What? I've never heard this before." So some of it I have, and, um, I'm just saying, we can do better. We've got to model the behavior that we want others to, to, to reflect. And I don't want to, I wouldn't come over here and say to county commissioners, "Y'all ain't doing this and you should be doing this and da, 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 da." I'll, I'll, you know, because I don't know what you're doing in Woodville. I don't know what you're doing on April Road. I don't know what you're doing in, in those regards. So give us an opportunity, benefit of a conversation of what we are doing, and then if there are gaps, let's work on the gaps. Thank you.
Commissioner Matlow.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor Protem. Uh, just briefly, sometimes I feel like we're, we're speaking past each other. Um, I, I was not insulted by any of the comments tonight because what I hear is a desire to, to look out for the people, um, in the area. I think the water quality issues, um, brought up about Lake Monson are, are very valid, um, as well as the comments about certain areas that haven't been annexed and I don't get the quality services that, um, the, the rest of, um, the city gets. But I also, I've been in the position where more time can lead to better policy outcomes. I think we all have, where we've asked for more time either as individuals or, or collectively, and I, I have not seen any reason, um, that this is so urgent and it must be, um, past the night. Um, as, to piggyback on the, the parent analogy, um, as a parent, when a child asks for a new shiny bike, you ask them, "Well, how'd you treat the one you already have?" And I think that's the underlying, um, question that, that Commissioner Proctor, um, was trying to raise. So I, I voted against the urban services area. Um, I would have hoped we would have delayed these just for, for further input, but I'm going to vote against this one as well. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor? Mr. Mayor, are you there?
I am prepared to vote in favor of the motion on the table. I am prepared to vote.
Okay. And, and, you know, I, I guess I, I would just say that, um, I would agree with Commissioner Williams-Cox. You know, I, I have served this community in a number of different capacities, not just in public office. Uh, you know, there are people in the community who ask me, "When do I sleep?" Because I make myself available. If I'm asked for a meeting, if I'm asked to attend a function, I try to be there, sometimes to the disadvantage of my own family. And so that's how I serve the community, by making myself available. And if, if citizens have input, I take telephone calls, text messages, emails, and I respond to them. And if issues are brought to my attention, I certainly endeavor to get a response. I'm not negligent in that respect. I would not have been elected to public office three different offices in almost twenty-four years of service, had that been the quality of the service I provided to this community. Uh, and so my suggestion was that if there are issues that were brought up tonight, we ought to have the opportunity. I know that the, the, uh, city sewer, the sewer issue in Woodville has been an issue for a number of years, but I have not been privy to that conversation with the city. And so I would ask that we be given the opportunity to get with our staff, our city manager and staff to be briefed on the issues that have been raised and that we not accused, be accused of sitting silent and not serving our neighbors. That's, that's the part that I have a problem with, because that has never been, and I don't think it's been the case with any of us, how we, uh, fulfill the duties of our elective office. So if there are issues, then those issues need to be brought to us and we need to have an opportunity to get with our city manager and staff and discuss those issues. So with that, all in favor of the motion on option number nine, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Opposed, nay?
Aye.
The motion carries three to two.
The motion carries.
Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor Protem. Our next item.
Uh, the next items, actually, the next two items are county only. They're located in unincorporated Leon County, so only the county will need to vote on these. Uh, the first one is April Road. This is large comp map amendment. Uh, it also has a concurrent resoning. Uh, it would take it from the rural suburban and urban residential to land use categories. Uh, you can see the, the suburban part up by the Hampton Creek subdivision, the urban residential along April Road, and then the yellow part is rural. Uh, it would take the entire site to just urban residential, so it would eliminate the.
Can you show us the option?
Resoning.
Commissioners, uh, I guess we're option ten. Is there a motion for option ten?
If I may, there's two options. Option ten is the map amendment, option eleven is the concurrent resoning.
Is there a motion for option ten and eleven, uh, county commissioners? Anybody home?
Mr. Chair.
We do have speakers.
We have speakers?
We do.
All right.
That's what I was going to ask, yeah.
The, the first speaker is Jeff Blair, and he's, uh, virtual.
Ms. Black, welcome to the, uh, county commission meeting. Uh, please state your name and address for our records.
Thank you, Ms. Chair. My, my name is Jeff Blair, uh, at eighteen oh three Old Fort Drive in Tallahassee. Uh, since the issue of public engagement was brought up, I, I did want to mention my frustration that when I tried to submit a written comment on Friday on these comp plan amendments, uh, on behalf of Keeper Rural, um, the menu that allowed for public comment had disappeared. Typically, that stays there until five P M. the day before the meeting. There was no notification that that was going to be a change in this case, and that was, was frustrating. I sent it, something to each of the commissioners, but I've never heard back from any of the commissioners regarding, uh, why that happened. This really doesn't lend, uh, to the perception that we're using a transparent and accessible or echo process. A meaningful, transparent, accessible process is to encourage public participation in issues such as the comp plan amendments, uh, is critical and fundamental to the core values of our community. At a minimum, the procedure shall, should provide for broad dissemination of proposals and alternatives, opportunity for written comments, public hearings, provisions for open discussion, communication programs, information services, and providing methods for meeting that meet the needs of different communities. Some communities are tech savvy, some are not. We need to meet folks where they are and provide them the opportunity and make it more easier for folks to participate. So despite the fact that we've heard some comments to the effect that, you know, everybody should know about this, there's been plenty of public opportunity, it's really not, not fair. It's not a fair analysis of, of people's abilities to, uh, be, be made aware of or have the opportunity to actually participate. And this is something that I've been working on, uh, with, with, uh, some groups. So checking the boxes for public involvement, even if you check fifty boxes, does not equate to meaningful community engagement. I can tell you from firsthand experience that our citizens are confused and frustrated with their efforts to participate in the development of key policy issues such as comp plan amendments. It's difficult to find and navigate information on the website, there's little time to digest large volumes of information, maybe a couple of days at the most, uh, and there's sort of a, there's a lack of consistently and fairly applied public engagement procedures that, that are transparent, that are meaningful, and that are consistent. Um, and going, and speaking to the amendments, I believe that our public investment should focus on encouraging and providing incentives for infill development and the redevelopment of existing neighborhoods and communities. Private investment follows public investment. If growth management policy did not allow and encourage more and more land to be made available, uh, in other areas for the urban service area, and instead strongly supported significant public investment in infrastructure and community humanities with, with incentives to shift development to areas such as the south side, we would see a dramatic increase in the quality of life for all of our citizens. With a shift in focus to the south and west, we could also make serious investments in infrastructure, including improving the functionality and safety of our roads, bike lanes, pedestrians, uh, protected walkways, and providing, like I mentioned before, various incentives and economic incentives to participate in this, in the growth and success of Tallahassee that all citizens can share in that. And thank you.
Mr. Blair, uh, thank you very much. Uh, I would, if you're kind, uh, I would appreciate your sharing, if your notes were written, if you would share those with, uh, our county commission. Um, very eloquent, you captured a lot. We thank you for weighing in tonight. Thank you, Ms. Blair.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I'll do that.
Thank you.
Uh, if the speaker is still here, Jean Marwise, I think he may have left. Uh, it appears that they have left, uh, so we have Gary Hunter followed by Sean Marston.
Okay, Ms. Hunter?
Gary Hunter with Holzman Vogel here on behalf of the applicant. I'm happy to answer any questions, otherwise, um, appreciate your time and consideration this issue.
Commissioners, are there any questions of Mr. Hunter? Thank you, Mr. Hunter. Ms. Marston?
Again, there to answer any questions you might have.
Commissioner Dozier guessed that, uh, your comments before you spoke them. Any comments, and you heard, you guessed mine too. Any comments from commissioners? Okay, thank you, Mr. Marston. Commissioners, we have option ten and eleven been proposed, uh, to us for. Commissioners, we have option 10 and 11 been proposed to us for adopting by the vice chair, seconded by Commissioner Dozier. All in, is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of options 10 and 11, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same sign. Aye. Pass this four to... Ms. Mayor Protem. Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, this is county. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So the next amendment is Southwood Plantation Road.
Can you take us to the options, please?
Can definitely do that. We'll note that some additional information was requested. That's included in attachment 29.
Could you go back to previous slide? What was the $4 million proportionate share? Please explain that, please.
Absolutely. So the transmitted hearing, additional information about the Southwood development, that DRI, in terms of what would need to be funded and what has been funded, was requested. Note that this proposed amendment does not change any of the requirements of the Southwood DRI, the development agreement, or the concurrent...
So this is not new money in doc, second, third, and fourth doc? That's not new money? That's old agreement. Is that accurate?
That is correct. There's an overall obligation for 14.9 million, a little bit more. So far, 10.3 has been paid. There's a remaining balance of 4.68 million. In addition to that proportionate share funding, there are some specific roadway improvements that have to be made. Most notable to this amendment is the extension of Biltmore Avenue from its current terminus all the way to Apalachic Parkway. It would line up with Suter Road on the other side of Apalachic Parkway.
Okay. Artie, Commissioner Dozier has a question.
Thank you. Artie, I had decided to ask you this question offline after the meeting, but thank you for bringing the slide up, because this was additional information I'd asked for, or the board had asked for, but it came up in our last discussion. So what I understand, based on conversations and this information, even if someone purchases other portions of the property along Southwood Plantation Road, for example, or, you know, other property from St. Joe, the development agreement will carry, will still be attached to that property in the future. So these requirements are not going away if there is a new owner. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay. That was a point of some confusion before, because some folks thought that the DRI requirements should follow the very small portion, that's my understanding of the property, that is within the Southwood Plantation Road project, that has been in the St. Joe DRI, but that's really not going to trigger anything. The other portions of the property are what are going to trigger these requirements. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. Having said all of that, the roadway improvements from Biltmore to Apalachic Parkway, this was the solution to Southwood Plantation Road. Long, long, long time coming, right? Do we have to wait for someone else to buy that property to get that solution moving? Or if this were approved tonight, if we see D.R. Horton move forward, can that portion of this be activated sooner rather than later? Or you could give me some, give all of us some information in the near future on that if you want to explain it further?
Actually, I'll defer to DSEM on that. I believe Ryan Guffey is here, and he can answer questions about that project.
You can make a brief if you want, but I think this is a critical piece of this puzzle. I mean, improving that roadway around the same time if we see this development happen may be in our interest.
Right, right. But the improvements based on, you know, like the pods that are adjacent to the roadway?
The improvements are what?
Based on the pods that are adjacent to the roadway and as they're developed.
And so, that was my question.
That's, yeah.
Okay. And that cannot be amended or changed. So those improvements to the roadway, it just, it doesn't matter how much we get on the east, development on the east side of Southwood Plantation Road, until the west side of Southwood Plantation Road is developed, we don't get that new road.
To get it in its entirety.
To get it in its entirety.
Yeah.
That we said. Okay. All right. That, I'll just say to the county administrator and the city manager, I think that is a challenge right there. I know there may not be anything we can do, but this county administrator, you know that route very, very well, and that's challenging. Thank you.
So does this measure move the needle at all?
No, but we didn't, from my perspective, it doesn't, but we didn't anticipate it would. I'm glad to know that the development agreement, the requirements, still exist. That was one of the concerns, was if someone were to buy the property, if that DRI requirement would go away. So I'm glad it's still there. It's just a timing factor.
Very good. Other observations, comments, inquiries from county commissioners? Do we have a motion on the table right now? Options 12 and 13, can we receive a motion?
No.
All right, we have a motion from Commissioner Dozier, seconded by Vice Chair. Any other discussion, hearing none, all in favor? I'm sorry.
Did have speakers on this item as well.
Very good. You want to predict the speaker's comment? Who are the speakers?
First speaker is Jeff Blair.
Mr. Blair, and to any other speakers, forgive me for that. The vice chair and I moved a little fast, because this meeting has gone on a long time. Adam County Attorney, do we need to hear that at all, or could we take the speakers?
What's your point?
It would be clean to rescind the vote, allow the public comment, and then make a new motion.
Thank you. I rescind. Thank you.
Very good. Ms. Blair? Ms. Blair? Yes, I'm here. Okay, very good. Ms. Blair, we welcome you to speak now.
Thank you, sir. Once again, these amendments are unfair and inequitable because our capital investments paid for by all taxpayers are regressive and disproportionately impact low to middle income individuals, while this case benefiting the largest national home builder in the nation, with $28 billion in volume and $9 billion in profit last year. Which is fine, but we oppose this and other amendments that continue the trend of car-dependent rural and suburban sprawl and traffic issues, while continuing to not do enough to address the issues of equity in our community, that we could use these expenditures, which we as taxpayers will have to pay for, the real cost of growth is not paid for by developers, and that is a failing that we as a community need to address. As an aside, recently, the city of Groveland in Lake County rejected D.R. Horton's cop plan amendments because they were not willing to provide for mixed use or pay for the requisite infrastructure costs. And as a result, another developer paid $1 million more for the property less than two months later, complied with the requirements, and the development was approved. So some communities will stand up and require developers to do the right thing, pay their fair share, and provide mixed use and not just single-family residential that requires cars. So that's our objection to these amendments. So I stand on those objections. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Blair. Are there other speakers?
I believe some of these speakers may have left, but I'll just confirm. Stephen Service.
Yeah.
David Handy.
Yeah.
I assume Linda Service is left as well. So that would leave Gary Hunter and Sean Marston.
Yeah.
Yes. Mr. Mar... You're good, Mr. Marston? All right, very good, very good. All right. Is there a motion now for 12 and 13?
Seven.
We got a motion, a second, from Commissioner Dozier, Commissioner Maddox. Hearing no further comments, all county commissioners in favor of option 12 and 13, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Opposed. Okay. It passes 5-1 with Commissioner Minor in opposition.
The final amendment is city of Tallahassee only, so only the city will need to vote on this amendment. This is the, I'll try to pronounce this correctly, NNEU Trust. This is located off of McClay Commerce Drive. It is a future land use map amendment and a concurrent rezoning. I have to read the ordinance into the record, so this is ordinance number 22-0-11. An ordinance of the city of Tallahassee designating lands as high-intensity urban activity center on the official zoning map from plan unit development at McClay Commerce Drive and Financial Plaza, providing for severability and conflicts, and providing an effective date. As I noted, there's a concurrent rezoning. It would take it from PUD to Activity Center. The ordinance for the rezoning is ordinance number 22-Z-12. An ordinance of the city of Tallahassee designating lands as high-intensity urban activity center on the official zoning map from plan unit development at McClay Commerce Drive and Financial Plaza, providing for severability and conflicts, and providing an effective date. This site is only 0.39 acres in size. That's why it's a small-scale amendment. It's a mixed-use zoning district, so allows residential and non-residential development. We'll note that there are a number of utility easements on the property, and any future development will have to be subject to those easements. The next step would be site planning and permitting, and additional information is included as attachment 25. Option 14 is for the map amendment, and option 15 is for the concurrent rezoning. We have one speaker as the applicant, and that's Jim King.
Mr. King, if you would give us your name and address for the record, please, in our three minutes. Good evening, or good night.
I'm Jim King. I live at 6650 Havana Highway, Havana, Florida. In 1974, this parcel became part of a 17-plus acre Tallahassee utility easement. In the 90s, it joined the McClay Hammock subdivision, PUD. I was told in November 2018, the zoning was mixed-use B. The county showed it as commercial. In 2019, City Utilities confiscated the property, saying permanent or temporary structures are prohibited on a utility easement. This opposed Florida law, Florida case law, and the 14th Amendment, since the city is going to build a pavilion and lots more in the market district part on their share of the very same easement. The mayor agreed without dissension from the commission. Mr. Goode reeled in McGarrett, who found new ways to grab land and resources. McGarrett doubled the distance required from power poles, juiced up the price of moving one set of power lines, increased by 500% to 25 feet, the distance required from a pole via an irrelevant OSHA rule, and tried repeatedly to buy the property out from underneath me. I bought the property. To atone for ample illegality, lies, and delays, I asked Goode for a break or terms on the $40,000 cost of one rewiring. No. He assured me it was all the process. Last year, I began the permit sequence anew, and was told the zoning had actually been changed in the early 2000s to government operations, which is reserved for government-owned property or private property with a government facility. Not once are power poles included in over 1,000 state statutes which refer to facility there are power poles on the property. This zoning mistake occurred after the rest of the 17-plus acre easement was bought by the city. All neighboring parcels are zoned Activity Center, all the other. It seems odd that I should have to pay to correct an office worker's mistake. However, I will pay whatever I'm told. I began the permit journey again recently, just to hear new city utility folks demand once again that structures are prohibited on a city utility easement. The price for moving a set of wires escalated 350 to 500% higher than what McGarrett had quoted. FEMA can underground for $26,000 per mile. City wants $72,000 for 200 feet. No one on the commission has contacted me, as I requested, about the decision they made three years ago. As far as I know, no one called utility to say, "Hey, we took care of this three years ago." Just a couple signs. Yeah, yeah. Ironically, if I'd been told the correct information by zoning by the lady who had one leg literally almost out the door, she was retiring, I would have a building now if I'd been told that. Instead, things have changed. I fear the rezoning of this property is too late to overcome the process. If you could... I am way beyond dismayed. I am far beyond despair. I thank you, especially the staff, the current staff, and your time on this rezoning issue.
Thank you, Mr. King. Artie, are there any other speakers?
No.
Okay. Is there a motion?
Move option 14 and 15.
Second.
There's a motion by Commissioner Matlow for options 14 and 15, seconded by Commissioner Porter. Any questions? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, like sign. Motion carries unanimously 5-0.
Mr. Chairman.
The chairman and the vice chair.
There is one more item, commissioners. It's the evaluation and appraisal review. I can keep this very quick.
Okay.
Florida statute requires every seven years that we look at our comprehensive plan. If there are changes that are a result of changes of state statute, we need to identify that, let the state know, and then move forward with those amendments. We are very proactive every year with tracking the bills, very much like the property rights element. That was a new requirement that came out of the last legislative session. We brought it to you. We do that every time. As such, there are no amendments required based on state statute changes, and so we're requesting to send a letter to the state land planning agency that indicates as such. It's the same process we followed in 2015, so the option for both the city and county would be option one.
Okay. There are county votes, county motions for option one.
Option one.
Option one's been moved by Commissioner Minor, seconded by Commissioner Dozier. All those in favor, can I say aye?
Aye.
Motion carries 5-0 with Commissioner calling out of chambers.
City Commission, motion on option one.
So...
Moved by Commissioner Williams-Cox, seconded by Commissioner Matlow. All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Motion carries 5-0.
Any more business?
Any other business to come before?
That is all for the joint city and county commissioners.
Regent. All right, we're gonna go ahead and call this meeting to order. Commissioner Dozier?
Is there a motion?
We're on the item that's the sole Santa item. You want to go ahead and introduce the item, Mr. Administrator? Motion been made for approval of the item, seconded by the chair.
Mr. Chairman. Mr. Vice Chair. If you remember the last time this agenda item came up to be scheduled, I recuse myself because these two events are managed by a person whose organization would receive these funds.
Yes, sir.
And that person is also an employee of my reelection campaign. So for that reason, for the appearance of a conflict, I'm going to go ahead and abstain from this agenda item.
Okay, we're good. Okay, so we still have four, no, we got five. Okay, good, good. Commissioner Welch, you still on? Commissioner Welch?
Yes, sir.
All right, great. All those in favor of the motion on the floor, indicate by saying aye. Any opposed? Motion carries five zero with Commissioner Minor recusing himself for the appearance of a conflict.
Did you say he was accusing himself?
Recusing, recusing. Don't play no games today. All right, we'll move on to the next item, Mr. Administrator.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This item is for the full board appointments to the Advisory Committee for Quality Growth, the Animal Shelter Advisory Committee, the ARB, the Board of Adjustment Appeals, not the Career Source Capital Region Board, that's been removed, and for the Planning Commission. Mr. Chairman, if you'd like, option one seeks your consideration to appoint, this is a reappointment, as a lot of them are, one citizen Leroy Peck, Kona's nominee, to the Advisory Committee on Quality Growth.
Mr. Administrator, will you go through all the reappointments for me, please?
Certainly. Did you want me to stop for motions?
No. Oh, can you get through all of them and then if you have any questions? Because the ones that are reappointment is just one person, right?
But, Mr. Vice Chair, what I was gonna say was, the county administrator could read the full list if we needed in the record. They are in our agenda items, so I believe.
Thank you.
Options one through five are, we don't have any choices on those.
Perfect.
So unless you desire those names to be read into the record, I was just gonna offer a motion for options one through five.
I tell you what, Commissioner Dozier, you don't have to necessarily, because I do want the public to know who those people are for the ones who may be watching, have the agenda. So if you could just, for me, Commissioner Dozier, just read those names into the record.
Oh.
I mean, you made a motion.
Sure. Don't take it off the county administrator unless you. Leroy Peck to the Kona Board, welcome back, Mr. Peck to Kona. David Kirk, I'm sorry, Leroy Peck is not on the Kona Board. He is on our Advisory Committee for Quality Growth. This is why you should have handed it to the county administrator. He's representing Kona. David Kirk, option two, is NIBA's representative to Advisory Committee for Quality Growth. Marguerite McCullough to the Animal Shelter Board, Aaron Van Sickle to Architectural Review Board, and John Outland to the Board of Adjustment and Appeals. Now for option six, Mr. County Administrator, we are removing that one entirely or is? Yes.
That will be rescheduled.
That will be rescheduled, okay. So those are the five names for options one through five for those different boards. Now, sir, may I make a motion for those? Okay, I already made the motions.
Motion been made, is there a second to the motion?
Thank you.
Motion been made by Commissioner Dozier for one through five, seconded by Commissioner Cummings. Any objection to the motion on the floor? Seeing none, show it as passed unanimously six zero. Any more items?
Option seven is seeking the board consideration for one citizen to the Planning Commission. Your eligible applicants are listed there before you.
Mr. Vice Chair?
Yes, go ahead.
Is someone else?
Commissioner Dozier, floor yours.
We have a large group of really good applicants here, so this is one of those times where it is challenging, but I would like to nominate Ms. O'Hare.
Ms. O'Hare has been moved by Commissioner Dozier, seconded. Seconded by Commissioner Cummings. Any objection? Seeing none, show it as passed unanimously six to zero. Mr. Administrator?
That concludes your general business agenda, commissioners.
Thank you. We'll go through, we'll go to Commissioner Comment. We'll start with our, I'm sorry, we have sentences to be heard on the agenda items?
We have just one, Mr. Chairman, commissioners, Delatory Hollinger.
I shall be brief. Good evening, Delatory Hollinger, Will Street, Tallahassee. I am here this evening because of the image in front of me, the, I'm wearing a county pin on my lapel and it's extra special to me because it was given to me by Jimbo Jackson. And I'm wondering if we might be able to place his name on Fort Brayden Community Park, which is right next to Fort Brayden Elementary School. I want those kids who have to pass by that park every day on their way to school to see a big sign that says Jimbo Jackson Park or Jimbo Jackson Fort Brayden Community Park. And I wonder if we might be able to do that as a county. Thank you.
Thank you, very good suggestion. Mr. Administrator, I think our board would be willing or ready to name the whole Fort Brayden Community Jimbo Jackson, at least I'm up for it. But what Delatory has brought up is specifically is the park, so if you would talk to us about plans you have on bringing back an agenda item, looking at memorializing something for our lost brother, Commissioner Jackson.
Thank you, Commissioner. We'll take that as board direction to bring you back an agenda item with options to appropriately memorialize and recognize Commissioner.
Any objection? Seeing none, show it as unanimously approved, we to bring that back. Any other speakers? Madam Attorney?
I have one agenda item. The canvassing board did have its organizational meeting. They have requested that the county attorney's office provide legal counsel representation in the current pending election cycle that would require direction and approval from this body.
Any objection? Motion made by Commissioner Minor, seconded by Commissioner Dozier, passes with no objection. Congratulations, you are the board attorney for the canvassing board. Anything else, Madam Attorney?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Administrator?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Chairman Proctor offered a moment of silence at the beginning of the meeting and I don't have much to improve that silence, but to say on behalf of all of county employees, I think it's appropriate at this meeting that I just share our gratitude for the opportunity to work with Commissioner Jackson and the unending gratitude that we have to his family for lending him to us so freely over his terms in office. And he's going to be greatly missed by county employees, so thank you for that, Mr. Chairman, for allowing me just to acknowledge that at the end of tonight's meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Start with Commissioner Minor.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. I'd like to move, basically, as you know, for quite a while now, we've had a task force that had looked at North Monroe and put together a very good list of recommendations that are now incorporated into five-year strategic plan. One thing that was discussed at that task force and also some discussions I've had with the county administrator over many months is the exploration of establishing a CRA for North Monroe. Now, what I'd like to do is make a motion to bring an agenda back that would explore the factors in doing that and also the process for establishing a CRA for North Monroe, whether it's with the county, I'm sorry, the city or not, but I could give you the pros and cons of that, but for the purposes of tonight, I'd like to basically request that an agenda item come back where we can actually have that discussion and comprehensively.
Motion been made for agenda item to come back on the North Monroe stay?
Yeah, motion would be to have an agenda item coming back on what it would take and what the process would be for establishing a CRA for North Monroe.
Motion made by Commissioner Minor, seconded by Commissioner Cummings. Any objection? Seeing none?
Thank you. As you all know, inflation is at a forty-year high, gas prices are record levels, rent has been increasing incredibly fast all across the country, but also here in Florida. Here in Tallahassee, Tax Watch did a recent study in March, I think, that said that rent within Tallahassee has increased by about fifteen percent over just the last year. One thing that some local governments are doing in South Florida is enacting a law that would increase the notice that landlords would provide to tenants from thirty days to sixty days' notice when they're proposing to increase rents by five, by more than five percent with above the current lease that the tenant currently has. Like to request, like to move that we bring an agenda item back, taking a look at what those other local governments in Florida are doing with consideration for adoption for a similar measure here in Leon County.
Motion been made by Commissioner Minor, seconded by Commissioner Dozier to look at what other local governments are doing in the way of time period as far as notification of rental increase.
Yeah, and basically extending that from up to sixty days' notice. So a landlord would, if a landlord wishes to increase rent on a tenant by more than five percent, that landlord would be required to provide at least a sixty-day notice on that rent increase.
Commissioner, Chairman Proctor?
I'd like to second that comment, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, if I could make, that's Commissioner Minor, Mr. Vice Chairman. If in fact that's proposed beyond a five percent, that that lease agreement afford the tenant the option of breaking that lease, whether it's for six, seven, eight more years, but such proposal would be such an inordinate impact and effect on a tenant that they be allowed to be released from any kind of agreement that would ask for an increase beyond five percent.
Commissioner Minor, would you willing to have it come back as a consideration during the agenda item?
Mr. Chairman, are you basically suggesting that should be a friendly amendment to my motion that to be included in the agenda item?
Yes.
Yes, sir, I would agree to that.
All right, so motion on the floor is that agenda item come back looking at increasing the timeframe in which a landlord has to give notice of rent increase, also considering if it's a rent increase above five percent, that the leasing be able to break lease without penalty. All that motion been made by Commissioner Minor, seconded by Commissioner Dozier. All those in favor of motion on the floor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries without objection.
I'd like to move for a letter from the Board of County Commissioners be sent to Senators Scott and Rubio. The letter would urge their support of the U.S. Senate's bipartisan agreement for gun safety policies, which should be deliberated upon and voted on in the U.S. Senate in the coming days. That letter should also state that more is needed to reduce gun violence, but that the bipartisan agreement is a step in the right direction.
I'll second that. Motion been made by Commissioner Minor for a letter from the chairman or from the chairman and the board. All those in favor of the motion on the floor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you, just a couple more things. I wanted to provide an update, a very brief update to the commission on the AWS summit that I attended last month in Washington, D.C. This is an amazing summit. Basically, my role there was to talk about how Leon County, spearheaded by the efforts of Christina Perez at OAV, as well as other partners from TCC, Lively Tech Center, have really, and many other partners, as well as the private sector, the IT industry here, have really done an amazing job in a very short amount of time to incorporate AWS cloud computing into local curricula. So with the partnering with AWS. So what that means then is that we're now able to provide AWS cloud computing skills to entry-level IT personnel that would benefit from those increased skills. By doing that, we can help them become more marketable, and by doing that, we can help raise their income. So really proud to represent Leon County at that summit, as well as to acknowledge the work from OAV, TCC, Lively and others. Next, I wanted to acknowledge Royal King, who received the Chris Knab Award for his, at the twenty-twenty-two Conference for Excellence in Nonprofit Leadership and Management, as is his role for the executive director of the Omega Lamplighters. His work with that, with Omega Lamplighters is the reason why he won the award, and just wanted to congratulate him and recognize him, he's a rock star in the county. Also wanted to say a good night to Jada Williams, who I think has already gone to the Tampa media market. Wanted to thank her for her efforts covering stories in Leon County. And then I've got a story about Commissioner Jackson that I wanted to share at some other point, but it's getting late at night, but just wanted to echo the county administrator's comments. I served with him for about four years and really respected him. We didn't always agree on the issues, but he really brought a voice of reason to this commission and elevated the discussion here. And you know that he gave his heart to this commission and this community and to his school, so just wanted to recognize that and say that we're going to miss him. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner Minor, and appreciate your kind words for Commissioner Jackson. Commissioner Dozier?
I was gonna forget there for a second, Mr. Vice Chair. Good joint meeting with our chair and vice chair. They're not even listening, but thank you, Commissioner Cummings, for that. All right, this has been a long meeting. I will get through this rather quickly. Going back to the beginning, we had a speaker on unengaged items at the top of the meeting mention Lake Munson and the Harvester. Mr. County Administrator, I believe the Harvester, the algae harvester that has been at Appalachian Park, which very much appreciate Parks and Rec staff, everyone else who's supported that effort, and I believe our public works as well. Again, it's late, so I may be missing some folks. I am wondering if there is funding available through DEP to, or if we've asked that question, to use it for a temporary time out at Lake Munson to reposition it out there. I believe everything's still in place. Correct me if I'm wrong, is it still in place? The pad, whatever we had out there for the Harvester? I know we had to do some infrastructure on both sides, right?
Yes, it is, and if it's available and if we haven't already, I'll make sure that we ask.
Okay. The only thing I know, I mean, I know it's due to leave Leon County sometime later this summer, but just given all the discussion about Lake Munson, if we could capture that, if there's funding available, I think it'd be worth the question. Do you need a motion for that?
We do not. We'll follow up on that.
I didn't think so. Thank you. No, sir, that, so there was some reporting in the paper last summer about a algae harvester. It's a new technology that was placed out at Lake Munson and the company and folks working with them were able to work with our staff, county administrator, and they moved that out to the Appalachian Regional Park for a time, so it's been out there. And this, it's, if y'all haven't seen it, it's a rather remarkable machine. It's like a big storage, storage unit, or not storage unit, that's wrong, shipping crate, shipping container. We really need to go home, Mr. Vice Chair. You make sure we get there soon, right?
I'm trying.
It's like a shipping container, but it is a remarkable machine that cleans the water, extracts the algae, and if we've got it available over the summer and DEP was funding it, I just, I just thought it might be a good opportunity, Mr. Chair, to bring it back to Lake Munson. Mr. Vice Chair or Chair, whomever's doing this, the workshop. Mr. Vice Chair or Chair, whomever's doing this, the workshop that I mentioned during the comp plan discussion, our lengthy discussion, I would like to make a motion for a joint workshop to discuss how we approach land use changes. And the reason why I say that is the discussion about the public participation and the process of our comp plan amendments is pretty set. I mean, that's, that is a standard process, but there may be other things we could do outside of that process to look at some of these bigger issues. And I will add into that, Mr. County Administrator, I truly hope this can be a joint workshop, but I think the issue is so important that if we can't schedule a time with our city colleagues, I think this board should take it up in the fall on our own. You could bring us back that option if, I will just leave it there.
Motion's been made by Commissioner Dozier, seconded by Commissioner Minor. Do we all understand the motion on the floor?
Yes.
All those who favor the motion by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries without objection. Commissioner Dozier?
Thank you. Um, this has been a very long meeting. Good meeting for the most part, but every time I'm looking down the dais, I mean, this is tough. And as others have said, may not spend a lot of time on it tonight. There were incredible reflections made at the funeral for Commissioner Jackson and I'm just gonna say I miss him and I'm thinking about his family a lot. So I really look forward to bringing back those options because I think it is certainly appropriate and timely to do something in his honor very soon. And finally, I think we, we need to also acknowledge that we, we lost, and oh boy, this is late, so I hope I pronounced his name correctly, Officer Ferriello, last week in the line of duty. I want to acknowledge that he was a TPD officer, but working with our deputies from the Sheriff's Department, and we know this could have been anyone. They put their lives on the line every day, all of our first responders, especially our law enforcement. And this has been a tough time period for all, for many in Leon County, in Tallahassee. So just wanted to mention that and much respect to our Sheriff's Department. The only two guys in the room, so I gotta look at you with that one. Thank you. And to TPD and to all of our law enforcement in the community. That's it.
Thank you, Mr. Dozier.
Thank you.
Commissioner Cummings?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. As we know, last year, the U.S. Congress, Congress had a bill to name the U.S. courthouse here in Tallahassee after Justice Joseph Hatchet. And Judge Hatchet had been a Supreme Court Justice here in Florida. He had sat on the District Court of Appeal here and he had been elevated to the 11th Circuit Court of Appeal. Well, that, that bill didn't pass, but I understand that some legislators now, especially in Florida, have changed their mind. Some of the congressmen, rather, U.S. congressmen have changed their mind and I understand that there, there will be a new bill introduced to support naming the U.S. courthouse here after Justice Joseph Hatchet. So I was just wondering, Mr. Chair, if, if the commission would be interested in maybe a letter of support to our Florida congressman, if that might help push that initiative along coming from our chairperson. And it could be the same letter, but just to our various Florida congressperson, U.S. congressperson in support of, of that.
Any objection to that letter of support?
Sure.
Saying none.
Thank you. Okay. And then finally, I'd just like to wish all my fellow male commissioners on the dais a Happy Father's Day, which is coming up this Sunday, as well as our county administrator, Vince Long, his assistant, Alan, and, and all of our fathers that are part of county government. Got our deputies back there, they protect us. I'd like to just wish all law enforcement a Happy Father's, Father's Day as well. That's all I have, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
Commissioner Proctor?
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, have you ever noticed that, that when Mother's Day come up, it's hit about a month advance and all kinds of television commercials? When the Father's Day come up, it probably gets on Thursdays, Fridays, Saturdays.
That's right.
I like that. Thank you very much, Commissioner Cummings. Commissioners, this has been a great meeting, much fun, very enjoyable. Thank you for your energies placed in tonight's meeting. I want to, again, to emphasize how meaningful it was that the chief judge of the Second Judicial Circuit came tonight and gave plaques recognizing the leadership of Vince Long and Alan Rosenwag and to commemorate their leadership assisting the courts through the pandemic. He was able to tell us how many cases he is now able to dispose of. And I mean, really, I can't fathom any recollection of the chief judge ever commenting about the work of any county administrator. So to Mr. Long and Mr. Rosenwag, shouts out, celebration. I bet you, you're gonna be hard-pressed to find any court doing that. I mean, if you do, let me know, I'll answer some. So great, great work and well rewarded. I would like commission for your, your, our desire to defer next week, Tuesday, the June 21st, at the groundbreaking of North Florida Innovation Labs at Innovation Park. Commissioner Dozier has been our representative for this board for a lot of time. And because of the, of her intellectual curiosities, she has poured heart, mind, and soul into the work. And I would respectfully, though I've been invited to represent our board, I just could not disrespect the great work of Commissioner Dozier. And I would ask your acceptance of my requesting her to speak and represent our board at the groundbreaking. If there is no objection, the chairman refers to the serving member of Innovation Park.
Congratulations, Commissioner Dozier.
That means a lot, Mr. Chair. Thank you very much. I hope you will and everyone will join us next week. This is an incredible project for our region. It's gonna do a lot of good, but thank you very much.
Very good. What you didn't know, Mr. Chair, was, is you probably would have said that we wasn't gonna let you speak, no way.
Y'all better stop playing with me. That's the oldest member sitting up here. Anyway, take as long as you like next week, Commissioner Dozier. I think it's gonna be about, I checked, it's gonna be about 103. I checked this, you know, the forecast. That's why I'm really stepping out. This is an outdoor event, 2:30. Have at it. I mean, 3:30. And then finally, commissioners, I would like to request an agenda item to come back and to look at and give us interpretation of where Lake Munson is, options, the septic issues around it, the question about harvesting bloom, whether or not we can assist those who have to pump out their tank, just the things that Mr. Epstein brought forward today. I have been there on site. So when Commissioner Dozier mentioned about the, that machine, boy, we need it there. And to have gone out and to look at two different locales and to see the same thing at two different landings, it was painful. So I'm offer the motion for an agenda item, comprehensive, looking at Lake Munson's status and potential steps that we can make to help cure its illness.
I'll second that. Is there, is there any objection to the motion? Saying sure it is unanimously approved, Mr. Chair?
Okay. And then to all the fathers of, of our county, we say to each of you, a Happy Father's Day. Thank you, goodnight.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'll be, I'll be quick. I can't let the moment pass without talking about the guy who sits to the left of me. Coming up in the wake of Father's Day and knowing the father he was to his girls and watching him support one of his daughters while she went through cancer treatment, it makes me wanna go home and hug my little girls a little bit tighter tonight. We're gonna miss Commissioner Jackson, not just for the commissioner he was, but for the man that he was, the way he carried himself. And thank you. I totally forgot about him. The way he carried himself on and off the dais. Little chock, I chuckled a little bit because I thought about the fact that this man went from being a PE teacher, which I can never even imagine Jimbo running half a step, much less running somebody's PE class, worked his way all the way up to being a principal and a beloved principal by the Fort Braden community, to representing them as a county commissioner after a longtime county commissioner, being Commissioner Jane Salz. And I remember sitting here at Commissioner Salz's last meeting, wondering, who in the world will we get that would be as stately and as calm and as conscious as Commissioner Salz? And lo and behold, God provided us with Jimbo Jackson. I'm sure we're all gonna miss him. I am especially. You don't know how many times after meetings he would call me and just give me a little chuckle off of something that happened during the meeting. But most of all, I think his family's gonna miss him. And so when you go home tonight, like I said, think about, especially as Father's Day comes up, just how supportive he was as a father to his girls and what he must have meant to them and what they meant to him. We love Jimbo and we'll see him Monday again. Commissioner Welch, I did not forget about you. Well, actually, I did forget about you, but I was reminded by my county attorney that you get to speak to. You got 15 minutes if you want to use it. Commissioner Welch?
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair, and thank you, Madam County Attorney, for reminding Mr. Vice Chair that I am still here as well. I appreciate, I will not take 15 minutes. I just wanted to echo the sentiments. I was regrettably unable to attend Commissioner Jackson's memorial service and I too feel his loss tremendously. As an educator, he is certainly somebody that I looked up to, serving his community similar to the way that I envisioned serving mine in the Northeast. And I am heartbroken for his family and his community and all of us in our dais will miss him. And he is, he is, we cannot understate the magnitude of his loss. And I know we all feel that way and I look forward to honoring him. I appreciate Delatrie bringing that idea. I'm sure we were all thinking along the same lines and I look forward to supporting that. I also wanted to acknowledge the loss of our TPD officer, Mr., I'm gonna say Ferriello, Commissioner Dozier, I don't know if that's right either, but either way, his, even though we might not be able to say his name correctly, it's certainly a name we'll never forget in this community. And our law enforcement officers put their lives on the line every day. All manners of first responders are EMTs at the county and our, and our sheriff's officers and our police officers and, and regret that we have lost one in the past week. So wanted to mention that and also, you know, say Happy Father's Day to all the gentleman servants on, on the dais and in the, in the government and in the community who, who serve in that role as a father, certainly my most important role, along with being a husband. And I certainly want to say, say thank you to all the dads up there who, who, who mean so much to their families, just like Commissioner Maddox mentioned, Commissioner Jackson certainly did to his daughters. And so we will seek to emulate that in, in, in all of his actions in the rest of our lives. So thank you all very much and thanks for indulging me being on the phone tonight. I appreciate it.
Thank you. One last thing, I think we, we did say Happy Father's Day to all the fathers, but let's also say Happy Father's Day to all the mothers that are playing fathers and the uncles and the cousins and everybody else that's, that's playing that role, coaches and everybody else. You don't necessarily have to be blood to be a father, so we appreciate all those who play that role for young men and women in our community. Commissioner, Chairman Proctor, I'll let you band the gavel after you say one more thing.
Okay. I wanted to request endorsement of our fellow commissioners for a letter proclamation to the fallen officer coming from our county collectively, recognizing that law enforcement serves county, all, you know, county residents. And I ask that we staff would prepare appropriate words for, to convey from our commission.
Your second to the motion? Any objection? Sure it's passed unanimously?
Okay. Commissioners, I know you didn't think that this was gonna come, but this instrument I hold in my hand, I just want to say to you, you ain't got to go home, but you're gonna have to get out of here.